Thank you very much, everyone. It's been moved by Councillor Singh that the minutes of the regular meeting held March 20th and special meetings held March 20th and April 3rd as mail to the mayor and councillors be accepted. All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? There being none. Item four, referring of communications, and there is none to refer to. So we will start off with presentations. And the first one is in regards to National Poetry Month. And Councillor Marsh, are you introducing?
Yes.
Yes. There you go.
Well, in honour of National Poetry Month, the month of April, we have Laurie Graham, who has initiated an opportunity to come and present us with a poem. So Laurie, please join us.
Hello. Thank you for having me.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors and staff and residents, citizens, for being here today. I'm a fairly new resident of Kitchener. I haven't been here a year yet. I moved here last summer. And I grew up in the burbs of Edmonton. My parents come from very small places on the prairie. And I'd like to read a poem for you today about -- it follows a young girl in a town much like the town my dad grew up in, in Saskatchewan, living very, very close to a residential school. And in fact, it turned out to be the last residential school to close in Canada, closed in 1996. So this poem imagines a young girl in a small place, growing up, and what she might know and might not know about the place where she grows up. It doesn't have a title properly. It's just four blanks with commas in between them, and you'll sort of learn what those blanks mean as the poem progresses. She's over there, close. The school, its graveyard, the one plot of land you know nothing about. Your neighbour, you know nothing about. Your double, same pigtails, same chance of a leather-belt teacher beside you, just down the highway. Your desks facing the same direction, your hands joined, tied, though they don't feel tied to you. You know how many blocks make up your world, and it's a fine number for a child. Your sibling, an invisible line, an invisible scale, and the nuns are failing. You, the inverse, the right, though you catch hell at school just for looking out the window, just for a stripe of mud on a shoe. You're twinned by road and mosquitoes and this twilight horizon, and no one is saying a word about it. Does she have her own window? Does she look out? Can she see the orange turn to crimson as the sun sets? What language does she see this in? Whose room does she see this in? The route between siblings can be a long, killing walk. The houses that parcel you, your bike, your mythologised sidewalks, you have no stories about anything else except the ones you made up. You know the names of a few trees and a few plants, the poisonous ones. Your siphoned desire spinning around and around the same block, it gives you your world. What does it give her? She's over there hungry. The mantras in the books in your library. She's over there being broken. All that's around you is you, is for you. She's over there learning what you're siphoning. You can do anything you set your mind to. She's over there being dismantled. You're keen in all the ways that won't help her. The earth has stopped talking to her. You make nonsense songs to the beat of your tyres over sidewalk cracks. And she's over there longing for her mother. You watch orange and crimson transform to navy blue. She's over there scrubbing her skin, and the water is cold, and your mother is calling you inside to bed just out of earshot. There are four things you will not learn in school. The name of the people, the name of the treaty, the name of the nearest reserve, the name of the closest school. This is where you are from. The school well off the highway and protected. The reserve not yours. The treaty taught is history. The people who live close and speak your language, you won't even register as different from you. For a while, you won't respond to your mother's calling. Your legs, they just keep pedalling, around and around. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming in and sharing that with us. National Poetry Month is an initiative that is taking place across the country, and it was encouraged to allow local poets to come to council. And I worked with Councillor Marsh to find you, and we appreciate you coming and sharing that with us today. And hopefully, this becomes a tradition in future years as well. Thank you. We will now move on to presentations of our award of merit for some of our longstanding advisory committee members. So I'll just move over to the other microphone for that. Sorry, Councillor Singh, I just -- sorry, go ahead.
Any pecuniary interest or conflicts? I had my papers composed. Item number six from the Community Infrastructure Services Committee on the matter pertaining to momentum development on 100 Victoria. I would have a conflict there, as my parents own property in close proximity.
Okay. Thank you for identifying that, and we'll deal with that item separately. So tonight's an opportunity for us to recognise a number of members of our advisory committees who have assisted the city in a wide variety of areas. I know there are a number of you who are here, and then others who aren't here this evening. I will begin by acknowledging the ones who aren't here, and we will be getting their awards to them subsequent to this evening. First of all, Christopher Hyde, who served on Compass Kitchener from 2010 to 2016. Secondly, Tristan Wilkin from Compass Kitchener, who served from 2010 to 2016. Don Zaire, who was a member of the Downtown Action and Advisory Committee and the Economic Development Advisory Committee from 2005 to 2016. Rebecca Short, a member of the Economic Development Advisory Committee from 2009 to 2015. Darren Snyder, a member of the Economic Development Advisory Committee from 2010 to 2016. And finally, Jamie Yancey, a member of our Economic Development Advisory Committee from 2009 to 2016. And now I'll move on to those who are here to join us this evening. And I'll begin with a member of our Centre in the Square Board from 2010 to 2016, Mr. Murray Gamble. Also, a member of our Centre in the Square Board from 2010 to 2016, Mr. Shaun Mather. A member of our Economic Development Advisory Committee from 2005 to 2016, Adrian Conrad. A member of our Heritage Kitchener Committee from 2007 to 2016, Mr. Grayson Zeilstre. You can see it on Facebook later. A member of our Downtown Advisory Committee and our Property Standards Committee, and also a former councillor, Karen Taylor-Harrison, from 2007 to 2016. I guess Karen wasn't able to make it this evening. And finally, a member of our Kitchener Public Library Board and the Safe and Healthy Community Advisory Committee from 2007 to 2016, Mr. Mike Farwell. Ah, there he is. So thank you to all of our committee members. Our city is fortunate to have many citizens who serve on our various boards and advisory committees, and as you can see, some of them for many years. And I believe our city is a better place for the many hours in volunteer work that they put in. So let's give them all one more round of applause. Now, all of you are welcome to stay for the balance of the evening if you really want. We won't hold it against you if you don't. We will now move to item 5C. And Mr. Gerry Van Oudigen, President and CEO of Kitchener-Wilmot Hydro, and Mr. Phillips, our board chair, are here to present the 2016 annual report. And council will also be receiving the financial statements of Kitchener Power Corp. and appointing the auditors. And there's an item under 9A, New Business, that'll be dealing with that. And I'll go to Councillor Ionidis at the time to move that forward. So, Mr. Phillips, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor and city councillors. Thank you for the time again this year to be on the agenda. I bring greetings from the Kitchener Power Corp. and the Kitchener-Wilmot Hydro Incorporated Boards of Directors. We are very proud of the services that our staff so professionally provide in this community, essential services. By every independent measure that exists, at least that we're aware of, KWHI is one of the most efficient and effective LDCs in Ontario. Gerry, we'll give you an update report in just a minute on the year 2016. It's a very solid operating year. And then, once the report wraps up, I'll come back to the mic. We have something to present to you. Thank you.
Mr. Van Oudigen, welcome.
Well, thank you, your worship, and councillors, senior staff, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to be here again this evening to present the annual report to you. I'd like to begin with some statistics for 2016. I'll begin with the number of new customers we added, 1,654 during the year. And that equates to a growth rate of 1.8%. And that is a bigger year than we've had other years, in that usually we're just about 1.2% growth. And I'll just advance the slides. Next one. Our kilowatt-hour consumption and kilowatt demand were pretty much flat for the year compared to the year previous. And as you will see in a later slide, energy conservation and behind-the-meter generation generally offset any increases that we see in consumption due to new customers. Next. Our total revenue for the year increased by 10.7% to $274 million. And this is an increase of $26 million from the prior year. Most of the increase is due to an increase in energy costs and the removal of the 10% Ontario Clean Energy Benefit. A total of 23% of the total revenue is due to electric energy charges. Distribution revenue for the year was $40.6 million, and that's an increase of 4.6% from 2015, when it was $38.8 million. The increase is due to a small increase in distribution rates and a slight increase in demand and energy usage, as was seen on the previous slide. Now, if we move to expenses, total expenses for the year increased by 11.4% to $263 million. And again, electric energy services accounts for most of these expenses, 86.8% compared to 83% of our revenue. Distribution expenses represent just over 13% of our total expenses for the year. Next slide, we'll -- if we break down the distribution expenses for the year, controllable expenses amounted to $17.1 million, which is 49% of our total distribution expenses. This is an increase of $955,000 from the prior year, but it's still below the approved budget of $19.1 million. Controllable costs per customer, this is a usual statistic that we use to compare with other distribution companies in the province. Our controllable costs for the year amounted to $182 per customer, and this is below our budget of $205 for the year. This is also significantly below the 2015 average cost of $319. If we look at our distribution costs, our controllable costs compared to other distribution companies in the province, and there are 71 distribution companies, Kitchener-Wilmot Hydro's controllable costs were the second lowest in the province in 2015. And that's from fourth lowest the previous year. So this is really key to keeping our rates competitive. So that leaves our net income for the year at $10.5 million, which is slightly -- down slightly from the previous year of $11 million. If we now move on to some customer statistics, first we'll look at an average bill per customer. And as of January 1, 2017, an average bill for a customer using 750 kilowatt-hours a month is $128.03. That rate is expected to further decrease in May with the announcement of the new time-of-use rates previously. Our rates, how do our rates compare to other distribution companies in the province? Well, we had the fifth lowest residential rates in Ontario in 2016. And that, again, was an improvement from seven lowest the previous year. You can see on here how our neighbours compare as well. We move to the next slide. I mentioned earlier about why our demand and energy consumption was flat. The light green colour is the total kilowatt-hour saved through energy conservation. The dark green is the kilowatt-hours displaced through behind-the-meter generation. So in total, 31.5 gigawatt-hours of energy were off-grid, or reduced from the grid, and that equates to 3,500 homes for a year, usage for a year. So you can see year over year how this is making a difference. If we move on to the next slide on capital investments, you'll see on the next slide that the biggest expenditure for us is in the orange, and that was for LRT relocations. And that was $8.56 million. We have to move plant out of the way so they could put the rails on the streets, and this is a five-year project for us that began in 2013. Moving on to reliability performance, our reliability declined from the previous year. And there are a couple of reasons for this. One is that we had, because our system, our distribution system, is reconfigured for LRT work, we had some vehicle accidents that caused some wide-area outages. So that was part of the reason we had a hotter summer, some more outages due to animal contacts. And what's not showing here is we had a pretty serious ice storm on March 24th last year, and that also had a huge impact. If we move on to service quality performance, we met or exceeded the minimum requirements of the Ontario Energy Board in all categories. Just of note is the number of telephone calls we answered was almost 90,000 calls last year. That was an increase of 16,000 calls over the previous year, and yet we were able to maintain our 78% rating. That's answering calls in person within 30 seconds. So that takes us to our last slide. I would just like to end by thanking our staff on behalf of myself and the board for their incredible work over the year, for all that, all the changes that we've seen with moving to monthly billing, the very high rates that we end up explaining, and the LRT work that we had to complete to meet the schedule of Grand Link. So with that, I'll ask the Chair to come back and make a couple of presentations, and then we're available for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gerry. This is probably the most pleasant task I have as Chair of the Board. I'll begin by making mention, and it's appropriate that that slide is up in terms of community initiatives. Certainly, I would say that our board not only takes seriously our responsibility along with staff to ensure that there's good power provided to the citizens of the community, but we also take our community responsibility as a very important thing as well. So to begin with, we bring to you tonight a cheque as a grant to you for the reforestation project in the amount of $45,000. And we're pleased to be able to do that again this year. And second, and perhaps in a larger way, we also, as a result of the successful operations that Gerry has reviewed for you, we do have a dividend cheque for you, our shareholders, City of Kitchener, in the amount of $3,870,164. So we bring those two cheques to you this evening.
Wow. Thank you very much to both of you, particularly for those two cheques. I think as a community, we're extremely fortunate to have a utility that's as well-run as it is. And I think a lot of the statistics that you shared with us and the audience here and the viewing audience at home really emphasizes that. And the cheques certainly have gone to the best place, which is to our treasurer, who will make sure they're appropriately handled. There are a number of people who want to either ask questions or make comments. Councillor Ionidis.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. And I think this is a really good situation, since we have a lot of members of the community in the gallery, that what an asset that KW Hydro is to our community and what it brings to the dividends to help support a lot of our community initiatives. And that's a job well done. And I know that's not just you, Gerry, and Jim, it's the whole team and the board and everyone else on the front line. So thank you for that. My question is regards to the $8.56 million with the LRT. And that is a big, significant number. But can you give us a little elaboration on what was sort of replaced, or the condition of some of those assets that were replaced?
Yeah, so the total project for us, as I mentioned, is over five years, and it's about $25 million worth of work. And so what we ended up doing is replacing a lot of the underground infrastructure in downtown Kitchener. That was the most expensive piece to replace. But a lot of that infrastructure was aged already anyway. So for us, it was an opportunity not only to relocate it to a place away from the tracks so that we could maintain it, but also to upgrade it to new standards. So a lot of it was there. And then there were pole lines along King Street and Cortland Ave that we relocated as well, as well as Charles and a number of other locations.
Okay, thank you. I considered that important to be noted, that a lot of the infrastructure was old. And so we're actually now in better shape, even with that improvement. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you both. It's always good to see you here in the chambers. It means there's a large cheque accompanying your participation here. And I think this is a really good opportunity, similar to what Councillor Ionidis has said, especially with the chambers full of our citizens and them knowing that the City of Kitchener does, I think, own approximately 93% of the utility. So our citizens are quite fortunate that we have quite a unique and a very well-performing asset in its ownership. And thank you to both your ongoing work. And of course, I think it's good to point out the community initiatives that are performed by the corporation as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Singh.
Councillor Fernandez. Thank you for your good news story. So I have a couple of questions for you related to the fact that we are 93% stakeholder. So that means that generally, the public owns utility, correct?
Yeah, I mean, you are the shareholder, one of two shareholders, township of Wilmot's, the other shareholder. But yeah, in effect, the public, you know, elects you and represents you. I mean, that's what makes us proud to be a community organization.
So you host board meetings? How many times a year do you host your board meetings?
We have four board meetings a year usually, is what we have. But we are a private sector company. You know, we're owned by our two shareholders, but our articles of incorporation are that we are a private sector company.
So really, then, the public in general cannot attend?
No, they're not open meetings. They're meetings, business meetings, that are run just like with any other private sector company.
Okay. You have representatives from council sitting on your board?
We do, yes.
How many sit on the board?
Yeah, so we have two members of council, and we have the mayors of both Wilmot and the City of Kitchener on the board as well.
So there's a renumeration that they receive?
Yes, that's correct.
About $8,000?
Yes, that'd be about right.
Okay. And then there's meeting expenses as well?
Yeah, there's a per-meeting expense as well of around $300 or so.
What does that cover, then? Does that cover travel expenses or?
Yeah, it's basically further time to attend the meeting, travel costs, or whatever, you know, they might incur to participate.
Your meetings are about two hours, three hours?
Yeah, yeah, two to three hours, yeah.
Okay. So when you're talking about reforestation, where, can you give us an idea where the reforestation was happening?
Yeah, so we really leave it up to the city and the township to decide where best to spend the dollars. I mean, the idea is that we must trim trees to maintain the reliability of power in our network. So in compensation for that, we make money available to the city, and they've did plantings before and right-of-ways or in, you know, walkways or wherever they so choose. So we really don't specify where.
Okay. Because you're right. I mean, a lot of phone calls, I'm sure many of council do, about trees that are suddenly trimmed dramatically because they're in close proximity to hydrolines. How do you deal with that? How do you address those concerns by residents?
Yeah, you know, there's a real balance there for us to meet our reliability needs. And in fact, there are safety standards that we have to trim the trees to as well, because the last thing we want to happen is someone to get hurt because a tree or something's making contact with the lines. So we attempt to, if it's on someone's property, we attempt to contact them beforehand, you know, if we can, to advise them that we'll be doing trimming. And we trim back, you know, what we can. In a lot of cases, it's not 10 feet, which is the, you know, sort of the legal requirement for us, because the trees are just too close. But we make sure they're safe.
And around, along the hydro corridor?
Yes.
Do you take care of that, or does our city operations take care of that?
Yeah, well, different arrangements are in place. Hydro One owns the corridors in most cases, and so in some cases, they're responsible for the trimming, or in some cases, they've contracted it out to third parties. And it may be the city in some right-of-ways.
I mean, again, we often will get complaints about how it's overgrown, and there's a lot of weeds, and those weeds are encroaching on residents' property. Do we then work with you? And?
...declined from the previous year, and there are a couple of reasons for this. One is that we had, because our system, distribution system is reconfigured for LRT work, we had some vehicle accidents that caused some wide area outages. So that was part of the reason we had a hotter summer, some more outages due to animal contacts. And what's not showing here is we had a pretty serious ice storm on March 24th last year, and that also had a huge impact. If we move on to service quality performance, we met or exceeded the minimum requirements of the Ontario Energy Board in all categories. Just of note is the number of telephone calls we answered was almost 90,000 calls last year. That was an increase of 16,000 calls over the previous year, and yet we were able to maintain our 70%, 78% rating. That's answering calls in person within 30 seconds. So that takes us to our last slide. I would just like to end by thanking our staff on behalf of myself and the board for their incredible work over the year, for all that, all the changes that we've seen with moving to monthly billing, the very high rates that we end up explaining, and the LRT work that we had to complete to meet the schedule of Grand Link. So with that, I'll ask the Chair to come back and make a couple of presentations, and then we're available for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. This is probably the most pleasant task I have as Chair of the Board. I'll begin by making mention, and it's appropriate that that slide is up in terms of community initiatives. Certainly, I would say that our board not only takes seriously our responsibility along with staff to ensure that there's good power provided to the citizens of the community, but we also take our community responsibility is a very important thing as well. So to begin with, we bring to you tonight a cheque as a grant to you for the reforestation project in the amount of $45,000, and we're pleased to be able to do that again this year. And second, and perhaps in a larger way, we also, as a result of the successful operations that Jerry has reviewed for you, we do have a dividend cheque for you, our shareholders, City of Kitchener, in the amount of $3,870,164. So we bring those two cheques to you this evening.
Wow. Thank you very much to both of you, particularly for those two cheques. I think as a community, we're extremely fortunate to have a utility that's as well-run as it is, and I think a lot of the statistics that you shared with us and the audience here and the viewing audience at home really emphasizes that. And the cheques certainly have gone to the best place, which is to our treasurer, who will make sure they're appropriately handled. There are a number of people who want to either ask questions or make comments. Councillor Iannidis.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic, and I think this is a really good situation since we have a lot of members of the community in the gallery, that what an asset that KW Hydro is to our community and what it brings to the dividends to help support a lot of our community initiatives, and that's a job well done. And I know that's not just you, Jerry, and Jim, it's the whole team and the board and everyone else on the front line, so thank you for that. My question is regards to the 8.56 million with the LRT, and that is a big significant number, but can you give us a little elaboration on what was sort of replaced, or the condition of some of those assets that were replaced?
Yeah, so the total project for us, as I mentioned, is over five years, and it's about $25 million worth of work. And so what we ended up doing is replacing a lot of the underground infrastructure in downtown Kitchener. That was the most expensive piece to replace, but a lot of that infrastructure was, you know, was aged already anyway. So for us, it was an opportunity not only to relocate it to a place away from the track so that we could maintain it, but also to upgrade it to new standards. So a lot of it was there, and then there were pole lines along King Street and Cortlandt Ave that we relocated as well, as well as Charles and a number of other locations.
Okay, thank you. I considered that important to be noted, that a lot of the infrastructure was old, and so we're actually now better shape even with that improvement. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Singh.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you both. It's always good to see you here in the chambers. It means there's a large cheque accompanying your participation here, and I think this is a really good opportunity, similar to what Councillor Iannidis has said, especially with the chambers full of our citizens and them knowing that the City of Kitchener does, I think, own approximately 93% of the utility. So our citizens are quite fortunate that we have quite a unique and a very well-performing asset in its ownership, and thank you to both your ongoing work, and of course, I think it's good to point out the community initiatives that are performed by the corporation as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Singh.
Councillor Fernandez.
Thank you for your good news story. So I have a couple of questions for you related to the fact that we are 93% stakeholder. So that means that generally, the public owns utility, correct?
Yeah, I mean, you are the shareholder, one of two shareholders, Township of Wilmont's the other shareholder, but yeah, in effect, the public, you know, elects you and represents you. I mean, that's what makes us proud to be a community organization.
So you host board meetings? How many times a year do you host your board meetings?
We have four board meetings a year usually is what we have, but we are a private-sector company. You know, we're owned by our two shareholders, but our articles of incorporation are that we are a private-sector company.
So really, then, the public in general cannot attend?
No, they're not open meetings. They're meetings, business meetings, that are run just like with any other private-sector company.
Okay. You have representatives from council sitting on your board?
We do, yes.
How many sit on the board?
Yeah, so we have two members of council, and we have the mayors of both Wilmont and the City of Kitchener on the board as well.
So there's a renumeration that they receive?
Yes, that's correct.
About $8,000?
Yes, that'd be about right.
Okay. And then there's meeting expenses as well?
Yeah, there's per-meeting expense as well of around $300 or so.
What does that cover, then? Does that cover travel expenses or?
Yeah, it's basically further time to attend the meeting, travel costs or whatever, you know, they might incur to participate.
Your meetings are about two hours, three hours?
Yep, yeah, two to three hours.
Okay. So when you're talking about reforestation, where, can you give us an idea where the reforestation was happening?
Yeah, so we really leave it up to the city and the township to decide where best to spend the dollars. I mean, the idea is that we must trim trees to maintain the reliability of power in our network. So in compensation for that, we make money available to the city, and they've did plantings before on right-of-ways or in, you know, walkways or wherever they so choose. So we really don't specify where.
Okay, because you're right. I mean, a lot of phone calls, I'm sure many of council do, about trees that are suddenly trimmed dramatically because they're in close proximity to hydro lines. How do you deal with that? How do you address those concerns by residents?
Yeah, you know, there's a real balance there for us to meet our reliability needs, and in fact, there are safety standards that we have to trim the trees to as well, because the last thing we want to happen is someone to get hurt because a tree or something's making contact with the lines. So we attempt, if it's on someone's property, we attempt to contact them beforehand, you know, if we can, to advise them that we'll be doing trimming. And we trim back, you know, what we can. In a lot of cases, it's not 10 feet, which is the, you know, sort of the legal requirement for us, because the trees are just too close, but we make sure they're safe.
And around, along the hydro corridor?
Yes.
Do you take care of that, or does our city operations take care of that?
Yeah, well, different arrangements are in place. Hydro One owns the corridors in most cases, and so in some cases, they're responsible for the trimming, or in some cases, they've contracted it out to third parties, and it may be the city in some right-of-ways.
I mean, again, we often will get complaints about how it's overgrown, and there's a lot of weeds, and those weeds are encroaching on residents' property. Do we then work with you and Hydro One, or our operations staff?
Yeah, there is a contact number for Hydro One to contact them if there's concerns on those major right-of-ways where the steel tower lines are, and they've got a customer relations group there that you can call.
Okay. I know I don't usually ask you this many questions, but I am taking the opportunity to share information with our residents who are sitting here today, who some may back onto natural areas that have hydro poles or have seen trees being cut, and I think it's important for them to understand that you host four board meetings a year?
Yes.
And that councillors sit on that and then get a compensation package for that as well.
And certainly for us, the message is about, you know, we take our responsibility very seriously about keeping people safe, and that's why we do the trimming. It's not just arbitrary.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Councillor Yonetski.
Yeah, thank you very much for your presentation. You did give us a nice cheque for, how much, 3 million? Sorry, I didn't catch that.
3.8.
3.8 million. And I gather our city treasurer probably put it nicely in their piggy bank, the big piggy bank, and then I guess council will decide in terms of its future on that. But you did mention, and it was mentioned around the horseshoe, that the citizens of Kitchener, and we are the utility, or the corporation, I should say, that is the shareholder, 93%, and basically, we represent the citizens of Kitchener. So they would, actually would like to see some of that money be coming back, is that's the way I would see it, but that's not going to happen, because it's sort of put in and we do deal with the budget process. However, the one question I have here in terms of your slide presentation, and I didn't notice it unless I missed it, or maybe it wasn't there, maybe you can help me out, was that you mentioned that the bill that the taxpayer gets, so much is broken into delivery, transportation, usage, et cetera, et cetera, but the issue that the public seems to still dwell on from media reports is the debt and the hydro bills and all that stuff, and that's somehow, it's in that bill as well. Is that correct?
Well, the, so the total bill was about $128. The portion that we, Kitchener-Wilmont Hydro, keep is 18% of that, so we're $27 or something like that. That's what we use to run the utility, Kitchener-Wilmont Hydro. All the rest of the charges are third-party charges for the energy generators, the people who generate the electricity, the transmission company who delivers it from Bruce or Darlington to us here, and then there are certain regulatory charges that are part of that. So all of that, including any debt payments they would make as part of their business, would be included in those energy charges.
And that's sort of a package that's built into, buried, I guess, maybe into the bill?
Yeah, so it's just a pass-through for us. So the 82% of the bill that doesn't stay with us, it's just, we collect it and we pass it on without markup. So it's just a straight collection and pass-through for us.
And that would be under what category, under the hydro bill?
Well, there's energy charges, there's one of those pass-throughs, you know, the taxes, of course, we collect are pass-through, the transmission charges, and some of the delivery charges are all pass-through costs. Distribution is part of delivery, but there are other charges in that as well that are just collected and passed on.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Davy.
Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen, for coming in. It's always a pleasure to have you coming this time of year, because you know what's going to happen. Actually, I was going to touch on some of the same questions that Councillor Yonetski touched upon. I think it's important to note, again, especially with the full gallery, that yes, you came in with a dividend to the City of Kitchener for about $3.8 million. And if I was a resident sitting at home, I might think, well, you know, we paid for that anyway. But I think an important point that's often missed is, again, on that controllable factor. So can you comment again on the, I know it was covered briefly in your presentation, but can you comment again on the difference in how much a Kitchener, sorry, a customer of Kitchener-Wilmont Hydro pays in relation to other LDCs like the Northern Hydro?
Yeah, so we typically reference residential customers, because that represents over 90% of the total customers that we serve, and the rates that we charge our residential customers is the, I think we're the fifth lowest now in the province. So there are 71 distribution companies like us that serve all of Ontario, including Hydro One, Toronto Hydro, the great big ones, right down to very small ones that are only 1,000 customers. And out of all those, I mean, our rates have been, you know, have always been very competitive, but in fact, they're actually even becoming more competitive. And really, it's because we spend a lot of time and effort trying to manage our cost and control our costs, and because we have the second lowest costs in the province, controllable costs, I mean, that helps us, you know, keep the rates down.
Okay, very good. I was going to ask, I've actually sort of followed this the entire time I've been on council in terms of those controllable costs, and I believe, certainly in terms of the region of Waterloo, we've had the lowest cost, I believe, like our residents have paid the lowest cost for at least the last seven years that I've been keeping track. Is that, do you have a longer history than that that you can recall?
Well, yeah, I've been around for quite a while with Kitchener-Wilmont Hydro. You know, really, it's the long-term view that our board and our commissions before that took with our business. I mean, as the city well knows, you know, infrastructure, you know, does wear out and need to be replaced over time, and those are some of the challenges you're facing now in water and sewer. And we were much the same on the electricity side. I mean, we have assets that, you know, are 40, have lifespans of 40 to 60 years, but we've been actively replacing those assets, you know, for my 35 years or 36 years with Kitchener-Wilmont Hydro. And it's been that kind of support, the long-term view of managing those assets, I think that I would attribute to why we are able to keep our rates low and, you know, keep our costs down.
Very good, thank you. And I just add, Mr. Mayor, just, I won't name the other municipalities, but I was looking at these figures for, looking back at 2016, for our 2017 budget, and in comparison to our neighbors north and south, I won't say who's who, but Kitchener-Wilmont Hydro, the average customer paid either $30 less a year or $130 less a year because of strong fiscal management.
Thanks for your comments and questions. Councillor Gazola.
Yeah, pretty much everything's been asked that can be asked, but I just want to go back to that costs we're encountering because of the LRT. Have we recouped any of that from the region, or is that totally on our dollar?
No, we have an arrangement with the region to recover a good portion of those costs, and it really depends on the type of replacement we're doing. Like-for-like is shared 50/50, temporary work is recovered 100%. If we have to move from an overhead line to an underground line, there's a different cost-sharing formula for that. So we did reach an amicable cost-sharing arrangement with the region, and, you know, certainly, I think both parties benefit from that.
Yeah, I knew the answer, and I just, that even though we're forced to do some expenditures and renew our plant, that we are recouping part of that. Just going ahead, looking forward, you mentioned that new rates coming out on May the 1st. Do we have, do you have any idea of where those rates are going?
Yeah, so they've announced a decrease in the time-of-use rates, which is the electric-energy portion of that pie chart that I showed before, and also the charge for the Ontario Electricity Support Program will no longer be on the electricity bill. It's going to be funded separately. So the impact of those rates, as I calculated them today, would mean that our, the average bill for residential customer would drop to $117 a month roughly.
What kind of a percentage decrease is that?
It's about, it's almost, so if you take the 8% decrease for the rebate of the provincial portion of HST, plus the decrease on May 1 for the new time-of-use rates, for a Kitchener-Wilmont Hydro customer, it's just shy of 16% decrease.
Good, good news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that appears to be all of the questions that we have, so thank you both for coming in for all of the hard work, both by the staff and the board, and the great job you do in managing the utility. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councillor Iannidis.
Are we going to move?
Oh, yes, we need to go to item 9A, so if we can deal with that under new business, and it's the motion pertaining to the auditors.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Scott Davy that Kitchener Power Corporation annual circulation of their financial statements and be presented to us and hereby received, and that the auditors, and suing physical year, and the directors are authorized to set their remuneration.
Okay, thank you. Moved and seconded, Councillor Gazola.
I just, was that, we're appointing auditors. Does the board not do that?
So it's, our understanding, Mr., okay, Mr. Chaplin, you want to answer that?
Through the Chair, no, this would be business that the shareholder would conduct at an annual general meeting in lieu of an AGM. We can do it by resolution, as will Wilmont, and that has the same effect as if passed it in AGM.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because we have a minority shareholder, so they're also passing a similar resolution.
That's the intent, yes.
Yeah, so I didn't want us to overlook them, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, that's carried unanimously. Okay, we'll now move on to delegations, and we do have many delegations in the audience this evening. Thank you all for being here for a variety of items. I do want to remind delegations that you have five minutes to make your presentation, that clapping and so on is, other than during the things like presentations, hooting, hollering, clapping and so on, is not permitted in the council chamber. We will move on to item 6A first, which is with respect to 624 Morrison Road. Just at the beginning of that item, I do want to state that the proposed development does not require any council approval, such as a zone change or an official plan amendment, to move forward, as it's currently subject to the site plan process for which staff have delegated authority. This authority was delegated to staff through the passage of Bylaw 86-137 back in 1986, and falls under Article 2 of Municipal Code, Chapter 683, Site Plan Control. During the agenda-setting process, the mayor and chairs agreed that although there is no council decision to be made on this application, it's important that we give delegations the opportunity to appear before council on this matter so that you can share your information and concerns. At the end of the process, I'll be turning to Ward Councillor Dave Schneider to refer back any issues to staff as per the delegated authority in light of your presentations this evening. It should be noted that the Site Plan Control process is governed by Section 41 of the Planning Act. Subsection 41, subsection 12, sets out that if the owner of the land is not satisfied with any requirement made by the municipality as conditions to the approval of the plans and drawings, they may appeal it to the Ontario Municipal Board. In a delegated situation, only the owner of the subject land has the right of appeal. So I just wanted to share that information with everyone in the room. We do have two delegations appearing with respect to 624 Morrison Road, Mr. Stephen Tisdale and Mr. Rick McElhern. Hopefully, I pronounced that correct. And I guess, Mr. Tisdale, are you first? Okay. Welcome, sir.
Hello. Mr. Mayor, members of council and staff, my name is Rick McLern, resident of Manor Drive, speaking on behalf of the Chicpe Concerned Neighbors Association. And at the outset of the presentation, I would like to emphasize that the CCNA is not anti-development, but only against bad development. Two of the many major issues we have relate to the environment of the site and the safety of the current and future residents. This slide shows the current state of a residential demolition on the property of 6 Morrison Road. The structure has been in this condition for something close to a year. There's another residence on 24 Morrison Road that is scheduled to be demolished as well. Demolition of both buildings are subject to a demolition control application, and though the application was approved, no permit was issued as the site development plan approval is still pending. How was the developer able to begin demolition without the necessary permit? What about the possible release of contaminants, including asbestos, PCBs, mold? And why wasn't an appropriate demolition and waste removal plan required? This aerial shows the yard site that exists today. The blue circles are the existing houses. The yellow boundary is the old farmyard, and the red boundary is a commercial sign business that operated there. That commercial sign business operated on the property for 25 to 30 years, and prior to that, it was a farmyard. Now, both of those businesses use hazardous materials, including paints and solvents, adhesives, plastics. The farm would have had used oil, pesticides, empty oil drums and containers. So in the days before recycling, and a lot of these items were simply buried. And as someone who has been involved in agriculture my entire life, I know that this to be true in many cases. So my question is, why is a Phase 1, and more importantly, a Phase 2 environmental assessment not being done? Shouldn't requirement of a record of site condition be a given here? Though not, the only issue, safety in my mind, is one of the most important. The only access into this project is off of Morrison Road, and Morrison Road is little more than a cattle trail that someone decided to pave. It's very narrow, it's steep, it inclines with corners and turns, there's no sidewalks for pedestrian traffic. So my question is, if you built something in there, how do the pedestrians safely go to transit, or to the park, or to a school bus? The assumption is that the new residents will exit the site via Morrison and King intersection. This is very difficult to turn left at that intersection during busier periods, which will force the traffic to go back up Grand River Boulevard and River Road. It'll even be a bigger problem when another development at 527 Morrison Road happens. With the arrival of the LRT, Morrison Road could become a right-in, right-out, or it could be closed completely. Likewise, if the entrance to Freeport Hospital is closed, all the traffic will be rerouted through Grand River Boulevard to Upper Morrison for access into the Freeport Hospital location. And what about the possibility of a French immersion school proceeding, which has kind of been on the books for a long time? What we're saying is that we need a detailed transportation impact study to study all of these possibilities. It is official that the Phase 2 of the LRT is going to run in that corridor. Regardless of how the route is planned, it goes by that property. So given that we have a housing project accessible only on a dangerous road, even with, which even today handles approximately 2,000 vehicles a day, and given that the longest boundary is adjacent to a railroad track that has five to six active freight trains a day, plus future LRT trains every four minutes, and given that King Street is a busy regional road handling almost 22,000 vehicles a day, so does it make sense to anyone that we would expose small children to a dangerous environment like that? The number four on that screen, in your screen, we aren't sure, but we're guessing that is the planned play area in this complex? The site is totally unsuitable for this development. According to the CPR, this rail line that runs beside this property is considered a main line. This slide shows that the line turns into a siding and a spurred line later on. We're told that a 15-meter setback is adequate for this project, but all guidelines and codes that we have been able to obtain indicate that main lines require a 30-meter setback to a new residential development. So again, given the sheer volume of trains and vehicle traffic along the King Street corridor, and given the fact that we do not know the exact location where the Phase 2 LRT is going to run through that corridor, why would anyone agree that a 15-meter setback is okay? Our main points of concern is that the dangerous access off of Morrison Road, increased traffic from the Cook Development and the 527 future possible development, the French immersion school and the LRT, these changing traffic patterns require a new detailed traffic impact study. The site is not, simply not safe for high-density housing, and the transit corridor setback needs to be at least 30 meters. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we'll now have Mr. Tisdale.
Mr. Mayor, members of council and staff, my name is Stephen Tisdale, and I'm a resident of Manor Drive. And at the outset, I'd like to reiterate that we're not against development, we're just against bad development. The CCNA is comprised of over 200 households, lots of whom are represented here tonight, of which over 170 have signed an online petition against this. and of which, over 170 have signed an online petition against this project. My first slide, my first slide shows a very healthy, rich woodland that supported an array of wildlife, as noted in our formal letter objection. Cook Homes Limited commenced clearcutting without the legally required tree permit on the 19th of January 2016. Tree cutting was stopped by the city, by city staff following complaints by residents, and the required permit was issued within only 48 hours on January 21st. This is what the woodlands look like today, almost totally destroyed. The site plan is still in approval stage, and it's now 15 months since a tree destruction took place. These are photographs of trees taken down on January 26th, five days after the permit was issued. Trees over 10 centimeters were protected by the permit. Permit generally allowed for trees under 10 centimeters to be removed. These photos show fell trees of over 10 centimeters in diameter. Person knowledgeable in these matters assembles that some of these trees were in fact over 20 centimeters diameter. The questions these slides raise are important ones for the residents. One, why was a very experienced builder developer allowed to start clearcutting without the required permit and not charged? Two, why did the city then issue a permit within only 48 hours to allow tree cutting to proceed when the site development plan was still under review and not approved, and is still not approved to this day? And with respect to the cutting of trees protected by the permit, why wasn't the city prepared to act on this, the second offense, under the applicable bylaw? This small parcel of irregular-shaped land with two extremely dangerous boundaries is set to become home for 68 families. Pay attention to this to the blocks along Manor Drive and the Compass Rose direction. This slide looks at comparative elevations. The gray hatch rectangle represents an average existing two-story home in Lower Chicopee, set against one of the proposed multi-unit blocks. Cook Homes' proposal fails totally in the areas of massing, bulk, and respecting the character of the existing neighborhood, all requirements that are set out as standard in the city's official plan and urban design manuals. The blocks also present a serious privacy and possibly a shadowing infringement to Manor Drive homes. This slide shows the layout of the proposed units. Living quarters are to the north, and sleeping quarters to the south. This slide, in a little bit more detail, shows a section through the proposed development and an existing home on Manor Drive. The units are poorly designed, with bedrooms on the noisy or sunny side, and the living rooms and balconies on the shaded side, or the quiet side, are simply the wrong way around. The proximity of the proposed blocks to the existing homes on Manor creates a serious concern with respect to privacy, and shadowing may be an issue. This development requires air quality, noise, vibration, and shadow impact studies because of its proximity to King Street Transit Corridor and the Manor Drive homes. This table compares the existing R6 developments closest to Cook's site. Please ignore the reference to floor space ratio, this 0.6 has not exceeded, and there's an error in that calculation. The Grand River Boulevard River Road development is actually adjoining Cook's property, and when you compare Cook's proposal to the Grand River Boulevard River Road development, Cook's proposal has 47% higher density and is 38% closer to the railway. And most important, both other R6 developments with railway boundaries are set back 37 meters from the central line of the railway. Cook's is only set back 23 meters. Assuming all our safety and site suitability concerned are without substance, why didn't city professionals discuss alternative layouts with Cook? This crude layout provides the possibility of a safer play area within a courtyard. It provides the possibility of a safer one-way traffic road network, eliminating the need for heavy service vehicles having to make unsafe and dangerous turns. It resolves the shadowing privacy issue and respects the existing architecture with respect to massing and built form. However, it does not address the overall health and safety concerns, other than the play areas enclosed, and traffic movement would be a little safer. The CCNA is asking that this development in its current form is stopped. And with respect to the site, we're asking the city that the city gets a record of site condition, an appropriate waste and disposal plan for demolition, including septic tanks systems, a new and comprehensive TIS, a review of why no action was taken by city against Cook Homes for its destruction of trees, a 30-meter transit corridor setback, noise, air quality, vibration, and shadow impact studies. And finally, I would ask each council member and member of staff who has some control in this matter, is this a project that you would consider safe for your young children and your families? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much to both of you for coming in this evening and sharing those concerns. Councillor Schneider, you were going to follow up with staff?
Yes, with staff. The possibilities, I know there's a lot presented tonight, and I know there's no way you can respond to everything, but I'm hoping that there might be one or two things you might be able to respond to, but just want to have assurances that the dialogue that has begun and is ongoing between staff, our delegations, the Concerned Chicopee Neighbors Association, the ministries involved in issuing some of the approvals for the site plan and the applicant, the dialogue will continue, and that the information that we will collect after tonight, that we share that in a shareable form with the Chicopee Concerned Neighbors Association through our delegates, who can distribute it to all their members, that would be great. I just want to also thank our Steve and Rick for coming in tonight. You have been absolutely respectful and knowledgeable in dealing with this, and as I said, tonight is not the end of it, it's just a continuation of the information that'll be given to you, and hopefully staff can comment further on that.
Janine?
Through the chair, I can provide a few updates on some items. The first is with respect to the record of site condition. The building division did request a record of site condition. I know Cook Homes is confirming with Ministry of Environment and Climate Change to confirm whether or not that's a requirement in this case, so that is an ongoing conversation, but at this point, they do have to submit a record of site condition for their building permits. The demolition permit has been submitted as well, and it's in the process, and they will need to submit a permit for the septic system as well, for that removal. I think the transportation and traffic conversation is one that's going to be better to sit down and discuss, because there's a lot of complexities to it. Basically, staff has done a little bit more evaluation, we'd be happy to share that with you and with the ward councillor as well. The rail, in terms of the rail, it's actually considered a branch line, it's not a main line, and so with the branch line, we double-checked, we contacted CP again last week, just to confirm that the 15 centimeters that they had get, or the 15 meters that they had provided in previous correspondence was in fact correct, and they did confirm that it is considered a branch line, and that 15 meters does apply to this site. So those were the main things that I can give an update on today, and we are fully committed. We have been providing regular responses to questions that residents have had in the neighborhood, as well as through the ward councillor, and we're happy to continue that conversation.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Netski, what, sorry. We're not getting into questions, as was articulated to, because this is a process that has been delegated to staff. We've heard from the delegation, staff have replied, and they will continue to work with the delegations and the applicant.
Well, I appreciate that. I just was wondering how the, how much delegation communication has been between staff and them over the last little while. I know it's staff, staff delegated the authority, but I know they're here this evening looking for some answers, and they've made a presentation, and they have some great questions. Some of them have just been answered now by Janine, which is appreciated, but not all the questions have been answered. So I was just wondering whether there'll be still further dialogue, and they will get what the answers, because I, as a staff person, sorry, I, as a councillor, would still like to know what the answers are to the rest of the questions.
Right, and I think, as we heard from councillor Schneider, who's been working with the residents, the dialogue is going to continue through both his end, as well as staff's end, in terms of working with them on their concerns and issues as part of the application.
No, and I can appreciate that, where that's coming from, and I know they had a meeting on Saturday, which I attended then, and I also had some questions from them, and I know they would have been directed to staff or Mr. Schneider, or councillor Schneider as well, but, you know, they were asking me of questions, and I didn't know, I said, well, I'll find out what happens tonight at the council meeting.
So, so you've heard from, you've heard from staff now, and from councillor Schneider in that regard?
Yeah, but I still think the rest of us councillors should get some answers, maybe in an email, as things unfold over the next little while, as to the answers to some of the questions. Janine did answer some of them, but I'm just wondering what the rest of the answers are, because they've got some great, great issues and concerns that they've raised.
Right, that's fine, thank you, and as I said, staff don't have all the answers today, but they will share them, and councillor Schneider?
I will share all the answers with members of council, so everyone is, you know, included and is aware, because we did get, we all, have all received publication information from the delegation and the CCNA, so I will, of course, share all that with all of council as well.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Fernandez? Sorry, you didn't click in. Go ahead.
So, I just, because there are three very significant issues tonight, is it possible for the people who are here for this particular issue just to stand up really quickly, so I have an understanding how many are here for that issue?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, we can't respond in any way now?
Yeah, we got you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, thank you for the comments you made with respect to staff answering the questions. We've been speaking with staff since the 8th of February, and at that time, we'd been in that meeting, and we asked some specific questions of it, we're still waiting for response to those questions. So I'm not so sure that, you know, I'm not criticizing staff, they're very busy, and they have been very helpful, and I just want to go away from here with an understanding that we're going to be included in discussions going forward, because that's what Rick and I were sort of elected to do, to represent this small part of our people. You know, we've raised the trees on numerous occasions. One of our, one of our members here got a permit to cut a tree down on his property, and was about to cut the tree down, and the enforcement officer appeared out of nowhere. So it's a sort of double standard, because city, city, no, no, don't talk.
Hey, folks, I ask, please, no applause in the council chamber.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, this, I'm not at all accustomed to this, this sort of, I'm from the corporate world.
Sure.
And, you know, if you ask a question in February, you can't still be asking the same question in April. There's something wrong.
Well, okay, and thank you, and we appreciate you coming in this evening and sharing the concerns, both ahead of tonight and again tonight with us. We felt it was important that you had an opportunity to publicly air them this evening, and that's, and that's why it was on the agenda. Staff have committed publicly, as is your ward councillor, to ensure that the information continues to come with you. But again, it is a process that is delegated, which is different than if there was a zone change or an official plan amendment required, which is an official planning process that, that, you know, has certain rights and privileges attached to it that are different than an application where the zoning is already in place.
No, I appreciate that, but I do, and we'll go now. With respect to the record of site condition and whether it's required, while there are not a rezoning issue here, there is a change of use, it's going from commercial use, or industrial use basically, light industrial, to residential, and I think under those, under the act, environment, under the record of site condition is required under those conditions.
And we will make sure that you get all those answers.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much to both of you and everyone who's come in to support these two gentlemen and raise these concerns on behalf of the neighborhood. Folks, please, thank you. Okay. Yeah, we'll just break for a minute while delegations, folks are welcome to stay for the rest of the night if they want, but we understand if you don't. Okay, if I can ask council to take their seats, and we'll get going. Okay, we'll now move on to item 6B, which is 11 Pioneer Tower Road, listed as clause 2 of the Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee Report. We have a total of seven delegations. I do want to remind delegations that have been here previously, that your comments this evening should be focused on new information. If you weren't able to be here at the committee meeting, then obviously you can present with whatever information you want to bring forward to council this evening. And we'll begin with Ms. Alicia Montieth, representing La Brusch Patterson and Associates. Welcome, Ms. Montieth.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Verbanovic, members of council, staff, and community members. My name is Alicia Montieth. I'm a planner with La Brusch Patterson and Associates. I'm here on behalf of the owner of 11 Pioneer Tower Road with regards to the zoning bylaw amendment before you this evening. Mr. Scott Patterson of La Brusch Patterson and Associates has previously appeared before you on behalf of this application, however, he was unable to make it this evening. With respect to this application, I would like to encourage council to adopt the April 3rd, 2017, recommendation of the Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee to approve the proposed zoning bylaw amendment for 11 Pioneer Tower Road. At this time, if any members of council have any further questions with regards to the application, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, and I don't see any questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to Mr. Adam Weaver. Welcome, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you. Oh, seems the clock is running. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and city staff and all of my fine neighbours that could attend this evening. My name is Adam Weaver and I live directly behind the property at 11 Pioneer Tower that is up for rezone. My neighbours, my wife and I are directly impacted by the decision that gets made on this rezoning application. I have four and a half minutes and three points that I'd like to make, the second of which I would deem the most important, so I hope to have a good amount of time for that. There is, first point is there is no need for infill development in my neighbourhood, in my community. Second and most importantly, the application does not meet provincial policy statement 2014 and the 2006 growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe area. And third, if I have time, a natural health clinic can coexist successfully with what we'll call regular commercial. So Saturday, I took a little ride around and I took pictures of commercial facilities that are available because the point that I wanted to make is there's no need to rezone residential properties when there's ample and abundant commercial properties not too far. So these three properties are between 200 metres and 800 metres from 11 Pioneer Tower. Secondly, on that same point, no need for infill rezoning when residential properties are in extreme demand. So there's abundant commercial right at hand and this new phenomenon of home-wanted pages upon pages in the Kitchener Record on the weekend, the home could be sold quite quickly and easily, I believe. What I really wanted to come here and discuss is the second point, and that is, and with all due respect, but city staff got it wrong. The rezoning application does not meet the provincial policy statement of 2014 and the 2006 growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe. And some of the points that I take exception to are here on the slide and others are part of a letter that you have as part of your package this evening, so I hope you had an opportunity to read it. I'm looking forward to questions on that. But I'll look over these four quickly. Point B in the staff report is that it makes the community more walkable and complete, and I believe this to be false. If the change actually made the neighbourhood more walkable, then why would we need an 18 to 22 car parking lot in the backyard? Point C is noise, vibration and other incompatibilities won't be an issue. Well, this too will be false. Increased traffic will create more noise and vibration, and more noise and more vibration isn't compatible with a, pardon me, a quiet residential neighbourhood. Point E, design lighting and signage will be compatible with surrounding buildings in the area. Well, this too is false. A parking lot is not compatible with the residential behind. And point F is a little bit complex. The report says its located owner has access to an arterial street or major community collector street. Well, this is false because you have to take into account that dumping onto Baxter, the intersection of Baxter Pioneer Tower and King Street must be considered one complex intersection, so we've all seen the aerial photos of. So as I mentioned, I submitted a letter detailing points around the provincial policy statement and the staff report. Third point that it looks like I will have time to make is really more for the applicants. And with the abundance of commercial in the close neighbourhood and certainly more outside of the kilometre surrounding, I've also found pictures of these two businesses here that you might consider sensitive. The applicant mentioned that her business is a sensitive business and, you know, I would certainly call the Red Cross, which is a new business right across the street from the applicant property, to be a sensitive business, but One Fertility is just around the corner. It's actually between, if you can remember those three properties that I took pictures of earlier, One Fertility is between those properties. And I think we would all agree that would be considered a sensitive business and it operates quite well in a, what you would call, typical commercial area. So that's all I had. I know I've just scratched the surface, but I certainly welcome any questions that you have.
Thank you very much for coming in this evening. We have some questions for you. Councillor Fernandez?
Thank you, Adam. Your letter was very interesting and supplemented by your presentation. I think you've made some very interesting points, one that I alluded to on the very first time about the proximity of all the other vacant properties that are available. So I have a couple of quick questions for you. You said that you, I mean, I liked your point about walkability. So what you're indicating in the pictures that we just saw is that, let's say, One Fertility, let's use that as an example. How far of a walk would that be from the existing proposed location?
Well, if anyone were to actually walk there, it's about 250 to 300 metres away, so it's not far.
Okay, so my understanding is that the owner of this site lives within the community and wishes to walk to the, her business. Would she be able to walk from where she lives to where One Fertility is located?
Well, of course.
Okay. Were you able to go into either of these businesses? Did you feel comfortable when you went into them? Were they homey and welcoming?
I didn't go in. I didn't go in, no.
Have you frequented any of the businesses that are in the Deer Ridge Plaza, which is located immediately behind your residence?
Yeah, of course.
Would you say that some of them feel very welcoming and inviting?
Without question. I mean, every one has different decoration, different decor, but yeah, without question, there's no issue in feeling comfortable going in.
Perfect, that's exactly what I was hoping you were going to say because I believe that it's not necessarily what's on the outside, it's what's on the inside when people go in. And having a residential house change into a commercial property when there's commercial vacancies down the road within the same proximity of walkability is, you know, something that we need to really take into consideration here. I did have another question. You said you back on to this property. The, what would the impact be on your quality of life, let's say, in your backyard when you've got a 12 car parking lot that is open till at least 8:00 PM?
Okay, well, pointer reference, Mr. Chairman, the parking lot proposed is 18 to 22 cars.
Sorry.
So the impact would be greater than a 12 car parking lot. Simply put, there would be increased noise of cars idling and moving about. There would be snow removal versus, you know, clearing a two car, four car driveway, there's going to take longer to clear an 18 car parking lot. There's increased garbage. Right now, we get garbage that flies in from King Street. Presumably, bringing commercial closer into the neighbourhood will cause more of that. Beyond that, I would hope that there would not be, but I'd be surprised that my property value would increase as a result of this. I would expect that it would probably decrease. So I feel like a bit of a cliche in that, you know, here I am standing here saying, please, not in my backyard, but please, not in my backyard.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation and your comments.
Councillor Gazola?
Yeah, thank you for coming in. I really don't have any questions. I just wanted to point out where you live, so you're right next door to the property. I have read and hopefully all of council, you've provided us with a tremendous amount of information and I've also seen you at several meetings, so I just, I did want to thank you for all the work that you've done on behalf of your neighbourhood. I think you really helped to bring the neighbourhood together again. I do want to emphasise, I think one of the big points you made is this whole question of, really, there's excess commercial space available and by opening up our residential properties for commercial is not helping the rest of the businesses in our community. So thank you again for all your help.
Thank you.
Okay, just for clarification for everyone's sake, when you say you're right next door and we're facing the front of the applicant property, you're saying you're to the property to the right or the property behind?
We own the property directly behind.
Behind, okay, thank you.
So the fence in question in the design plan is actually 100% on my property.
Right, okay, thank you. Do you want to click in, councillor Ionitis? Go ahead.
Is it Pioneer Tower? Like, it's a corner lot, so I don't know which is left side.
Okay, well, not that it matters much because changing a residential property to commercial regardless of where my house is, is ill-advised, but for clarity, my home is 248 Edgehill, which backs directly onto the property at 11 Pioneer Tower.
So you're kitty corner, okay.
Directly behind.
Behind, directly behind, not kitty corner.
Okay.
We'll get a map that'll show.
Yeah.
So is the property that now says River Breeze Bed and Breakfast?
Previously, yes.
Previously, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, so it was a bed and breakfast before?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we converted it back to a regular residence when we moved in.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the questions for you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Mr. Monte Oaks. Mr. Monte Oaks? Oh, here we go. Welcome, Mr. Oaks.
Thank you. I wasn't absolutely sure I was going to speak, so I was hoping other delegates would take my place, but anyway, I'm a resident of the area, I've been a resident for over 30 years and I, there's quite a few people here tonight that do not want to see this development and I am one. I don't know because I haven't been to all the meetings, I don't know what the hours of operation are, but I presume it'll be at least five, maybe six days a week. And if it is, this is not something we would like to have for our neighbourhood. I don't know if there's financial benefits for the owners, but I would think a resident next to a commercial property would not enhance the value of a residential home. I also noticed that writers in the Kitchener Post almost completely take the side of the residence to keep it the way it is, keep it residential. I also drove around the area and looked at available properties that would be suitable for this type of operation. There's many, many vacant commercial buildings or right across the road, there were six spots right in a row in the one commercial mall. I really don't think there's any need for turning this into a commercial operation because one thing leads to another and I'm very suspicious of any, granting any leeway on this because if you remember when Pioneer Tower was developed, I was at some of the first meetings, the resident says, "We don't want row housing, we don't want..." "Oh, no", the council says, "No, it'll all be no more than six homes per hectare and we'll develop it." Well, you drive down and that didn't happen because they've got sewer and water in which we don't have in our area, but it didn't happen. So I'm very, very much against granting an inch of leeway on this because it's only a start of something that could go on. If this business isn't successful, will it be sold to another business and we have to go through this all again? In summary, I'd like to say, side with the residents, they're here in force and they're here because they don't want a development in that area. Thank you.
Sir, we have some questions for you. Councillor Yonetski?
Yes, thank you for coming in. You said you lived in the area. Do you live on Pioneer Tower Road or Edgehill?
No, I don't live close enough really to be affected. I live in Limerick.
Oh, I see, okay, further down the street there.
Yeah.
Okay, appreciate it. How many, just out of curiosity, you're here on behalf of the community or on behalf of yourself, but speaking on behalf of the community as well. How many people, a show of hands, are from the Pioneer Tower area? Okay, just gives us a hand because I know there's three different groups here and one has left and there were still two more left, so I'm just trying to see what the numbers were. Okay, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Okay, those are all the questions we have for you. Thanks for coming in this evening, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Ken Flood. Mr. Flood? Ah, there you are. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
And council will also note there's a copy of...
Councillors and all my neighbours, I moved here in 1979 after a lengthy decision process with my business partner to move our company, Comdev, from Quebec. We looked at a number of communities but were particularly attracted to the mix of rural business and educational offerings in this area. We built our company in an industrial zone and found a cottage-like neighbourhood on the Grand River. We loved and decided to make Edgehill Drive our home. I don't know if any of you have driven by our house, but my wife and I take great pride in maintaining one of the most beautiful private gardens in the area and possibly in the country. While I appreciate the convenience for owners of 11 Pioneer Tower to use the building for business, there is no evidence indicating it will enhance, complete or even, no evidence indicating it will enhance, complete or even be used by our community. The intersection of Pioneer Tower Road and Baxter is already confusing for drivers who don't know the area, creating a challenge for us who like to walk around the block. Rezoning this property will have a big impact on us, impacting our safety by bringing more traffic into our neighbourhood where we don't have a common city service such as sidewalks, city water and sewage. The business owner could establish an office at any of the vacant properties a couple of hundred metres away, all with parking, lighting and snow removal. I am asking council to take a firm stand supporting a community that has more than its fair share of change. I hope council has a better understanding of the changes in our community over the past several years. So far, we have polled 81% of our neighbours and 93% of them opposed the zoning change. If the city approves the change, then we are likely to see similar changes in the future. I feel so strongly that I will support an appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board if this zoning change is approved. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. We do have some questions for you. Councillor Gazola?
Ken, thank you for coming in and bringing us your message.
Sir, if you can stay at the microphone?
If you can.
Because if you don't mind, if that's okay?
I won't keep you long. I just wanted to reiterate what you pointed out, that there has been considerable change in your neighbourhood. What part of Edgehill are you on right now? Can you?
I'm across from Cressman.
Okay, so you're, yeah, I know your property now when you mention how well you look after and how beautiful it is, so the, I just wanted to, you did point out that, and this is something we hear about, that you feel so strongly about this that you would even be prepared to consider going to the OMB if council were not supportive of you tonight. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's all. Thank you very much and thanks for coming in.
One more question for you. Councillor Yonetski?
Yeah, thank you very much. As you pointed out, through Councillor Gazola's questioning, you live on Edgehill and Cressman area, right? To get in and out of where your house is to get, if you're going along King Street, do you use the Cressman exit entrance or do you go to Baxter and use the lights?
I probably use Baxter more, depending on the time of day.
Why?
Because there's a traffic light there.
And it's easier to get onto King's
And it's easier to get onto King Street, because it's just so busy?
It's, it's just safer to, to have the traffic lights there to guide you.
Okay, and, and now it's going to be added on with more vehicles?
I don't know if it's safer than going the other route, but, yeah. It's, it's tough going either way.
Yeah, I can, I can appreciate it, because I know exactly where you're going, and the traffic is, is very, very difficult in my area. I've experienced it too. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in this evening, sir. Next up, we have Ms. Natalie Stubings. Welcome, Ms. Stubings.
Good evening, thank you, council. My name is Natalie Stubings. Myself and my husband moved to Limerick Drive last year. Some of the concerns that have been mentioned in these discussions are not necessarily shared by us, simply because we do not live in close proximity to 11 Pioneer Tower Road. Nonetheless, we do have concerns for the community that we are now part of. At a previous council meeting, the applicant spoke about her reasons why she wanted to bring her practice to our neighbourhood. She indicated that she felt the opposition came out of a fear of change. Change is inevitable, however, is this the kind of change you want to bring to our community? We are not discussing a park, or a road, or a community centre, we're discussing a private business. The applicant stands to make personal gains by bringing her business to her community. She, she spoke about the kind of environment she wants to provide her clientele. This unfortunately comes at the cost of her neighbours. Her neighbours have provided her for that environment, which allows for the friendly, approachable feeling, which she has indicated is important to her practice. With this change, her neighbours will have to deal with disruption to their lives, and may not be permitted to enjoy their properties as they wish to. Realistically speaking, no matter how you build a fence, you cannot block out noise, nor can you avoid the exhaust from a running vehicle. We do not live in downtown Kitchener, where such developments can be expected and should be tolerated. Our community has been here for years, and the people who live there believe in maintaining the natural integrity of the area. What does the applicant plan to bring to the community by developing this property? Once the parking lot goes in, it can't be taken back. It is not right to, to design situation for the individual benefits while the community surrounding her is at a loss. Which brings me to my second point. We have great concerns about the precedent that's being set by permitting this rezoning to occur. There's no guarantee in the future that there will be, not be, other applicants who have a desire to develop their property into a business. Council has indicated that they would entertain these requests on a case-by-case basis, but that is my point. When you say yes to this change, it'll be difficult to say no to further changes in the future. These changes could have even more drastic, and have a deeper impact on the community and its environment than the one that we're discussing today. How does this serve the community? As a resident, it is my ultimate concern. How would these changes benefit our community as a whole, rather than for one individual? As council members, I ask that you keep in mind, when voting on this decision, that you act the interest of the community, rather than in one private party. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. We do have some questions for you. Councillor Gazola.
Again, I don't have any questions of you. I do want to thank you for coming in and expressing your views. I, I gather that you're relatively new to the area, and it's interesting to hear a viewpoint of someone that is newer to the area, so thank you for taking the time.
Well, thank you for having me. When we moved to the area, we moved to the area because it was the way that it was, and it's upsetting to hear that there could be change, and ongoing change moving forward. We moved to this community with the intention to stay, and we like it to stay the way that it is.
Good point, thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are all the questions we have. Ms. Karen Carter, please. Good evening, welcome, Ms. Carter.
Thank you. Honorable mayor, councillors and staff, fellow citizens, I'd like to speak on behalf of the team that circulated the petition in our neighbourhood regarding stopping the zone change application at 11 Pioneer Tower Road, and present you with that petition with a hundred and seventy-eight names on it. Our team knocked on doors on some, some of Pioneer Tower Road, close to the property in question, Pioneer Growth Court, which is also close by, Edgehill Drive, Marquette Drive, Cressman Avenue, Limerick Drive, Helen Avenue, and Stanson Close. Basically, that covers all of the streets in our island that is bordered by King Street, the 401, and the Grand River, without getting very far into the neighbouring Deer Ridge neighbourhood. We attempted to contact the majority of the people who would be directly affected by this zone change application. The petition team consisted of five individuals, or couples, that live within these boundaries. It was interesting to note that only one couple actually neighbourd on to 11 Pioneer Tower Road, and all the others live several hundred metres away, and still felt very strongly about the matter, enough so to spend hours walking the area and getting the petition signed. In total, a hundred and thirty-nine homes were visited. People were not home at twenty-six of them, so the responses came from one hundred and thirteen of the homes in the area. Of those one hundred and thirteen homes, we had one hundred and six homes with people who signed the petition, resulting in one hundred and seventy-eight signatures. This reflects ninety-three point eight percent saying a resounding no to the zone change application. We did have five homes that were in favour of the applicant, which reflects four point four percent. Some of these people actually verbalised that they were friends with the applicant. If they hadn't been friends, they said they would have signed the petition against the zone application. We also had someone who heard we were circulating the petition, and they came in to seek us out so that they could sign it. They felt strongly enough about it. Many of the people who signed the petition voiced serious concerns about the traffic, the encroaching commercial usage into a residential neighbourhood, and changing the face of our neighbourhood. We really appreciate those councillors who have taken the time to come to our area and see what we value so much in our unique area, as well as what we already deal with in terms of traffic at a very busy intersection. It is really the only safe way to turn left towards Kitchener out of our neighbourhood, as Mr. Flood was mentioning, as there is a light there, although a very short light, and so can be extremely busy. The other streets that come off of Edgehill, none of them have lights, so to turn left on to King Street is, I think, I agree with Mr. Flood, very dangerous. The intersection is complicated and gets backed up often during the day and early evening. Putting a busy office on that corner is certainly going to make things more problematic. Our neighbourhood is not like many of the others in Kitchener. My husband and I moved here two and a half years ago, after living for twenty-five years in a home in the east ward of Kitchener. That was a typical neighbourhood, with front porches, schools, churches, and corner stores. When we moved to Edgehill Drive, we realised we wouldn't have those things. It is, in fact, some of the charm of the area that we don't have them. Many of us are still very active, even though we don't have sidewalks. It's a beautiful area to walk, run, bike in, lots of gardening. Most importantly, we have a great group of people who make us completely comfortable in a very, very short time. It is our neighbours that make it such a welcoming neighbourhood. We love the large lots, mature trees, and hate the idea of seeing businesses start buying up properties to commercialise them and pave the yards to make parking lots. We are an easy walking distance to a number of commercial plazas that have numerous spaces to lease, well over twenty empty storefronts in our small corner of town, and all within walking. Why take an attractive house and change the zoning on it? It really doesn't make sense. In closing, I am hopeful that you will listen to my voice, as well as the a hundred and seventy-seven others who signed our petition, and ask that you vote against this application for zone change at 11 Pioneer Tower Road. Thank you very much. And I have the petition, like, I didn't know about online petitions. Now I know, but here, there are all the papers, if you want them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in this evening. Councillor Gazola, you have some questions?
I don't, I just want to thank you for coming in, and I also have a, a copy of your petition. I thought if we could, I'll see that you get the original back, or?
I have a copy.
Okay, so that, this way, I can start one, one from this end, and the other one can go around the other end, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And thank you for all the work that you and your neighbours did, and going out and talking to all your, your neighbours.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are all the questions we have. And the last delegation we have is Mr. Bob, is it Seep? Sype, sorry, apologies. Try having a last name like Verbenovic. Welcome, sir.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, councillors, mayor, mayor, and ladies and gentlemen. I believe you've got a copy of an email that I sent about a week ago. It bounced back from the mayor and all the councillors, but I had it delivered to your offices. It was dated April the thirteenth, so I will feed things to a bullet form. First and foremost, I'm not here on just behalf of myself and my wife, or the neighbours that are abutting this property, but the neighbourhood, as you can rest assured by the number of people that are here. The one big thing that comes out, and it doesn't seem to get mentioned enough, is the traffic congestion. Traffic congestion is the greatest concern. Pioneer Baxter, Pioneer Tower, Baxter and King Street continues to be a major traffic problem, has been for as long as anyone remembers. Police stand by the area. U-turn signs were put up, doesn't help. They drive through, because there's no other way than making a left-hand turn from Sports World, without sitting there for a number of turns. They drive through the street anyways, and turn around in either Mothers' or our place, or my adjoining neighbours, okay? We had a traffic study that was presented, said four to six cars might result in, from the new business. That's a joke. If there's four or six cars going into this business, the business is going to be bankrupt and closed up, and we've got another, another major problem. We cannot stand for any more traffic in that area unless we want to risk our children, because there's bus stops near on Pioneer Tower Road, as well as on the corner of Baxter and Edgehill. That is only part of the problem. Who would want to have a parking lot in their backyard? Think about it before you vote the next time. Picture your house, wherever it might be, and the neighbour's lot being filled in with concrete, and parked with upwards of twenty cars on any particular moment of time. Neighbour spoke gently about it, about the noise, well, believe me, you know what noise is, when you have ten, fifteen, twenty cars starting up, whether it be winter or summer, okay? If the property goes through for a zone change, that is the start of a bigger problem. We did not feel we got a good hearing from the staff department. When an idea was presented, for example, of putting the parking in the front of the building, instead of at the back, where it wouldn't be as intrusive on the neighbours, it was just pushed to the side. Well, there's not enough room in between the two buildings, the existing neighbour and the property in concern. Well, we didn't talk about that. Put it in the front yard. If it's going to be a commercial, put it in the front yard. But remember, we don't want it in the first place, okay? Safety to children, parking congestion, and last but not least, there is no need for this type of a business in the subdivision that you're talking about. We got traffic congestion, we got danger, we got children's safety, we got no need for it. I beg of the councillors and the mayor to vote this thing down, and even before that, I would love to see, or hear, that each one of you have actually been out to the site, because I couldn't begin to explain how Pioneer Tower Road and Baxter and King Street works as an intersection. You cannot go off a Cressman, you cannot go off a Limerick, and make a left-hand turn unless you pray before you pull out. And I mean a long prayer on your knees, okay? That is why Ken Flood mentioned about going to our corner. Believe me, people come from Deer Ridge. The young lady Nadia that spoke from Limerick, they come up to Baxter for safety, even though it's a dangerous bloody corner, okay? We don't have that being taken into consideration enough. And last but not least, twenty parking spots, come on, guys. Who would want that immediately behind your fence, when you're trying to enjoy your children? In my case, grandchildren, I'm sure a lot of other, my neighbours have grandchildren, in the pool, or in a grass location versus concrete. I thank you very much for hearing me out, and last but not least, it is not our difficulty if somebody buys a property that was not part of the offer to get a rezoning, okay? This party said they were wanting to do this for the best interest of the neighbourhood. The neighbourhood has spoken, so the best interest of the neighbourhood is a no. I thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in. There are some questions for you, Mr. Sype. Councillor Yonetski.
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. Whereabouts do you live in that area?
Once again, if you think of Pioneer Road, as you come off of King Street, runs kind of parallel with King Street, Pioneer Tower Road, and Marquette runs behind that.
Yep, I know where it is, I know where it is.
We are on Baxter, immediately across from 11 Pioneer.
Okay.
So kind of between Adam's property, 11 Pioneer, is ours, on the corner of Baxter and Edgehill. And another way of putting it, immediately behind Mothers'.
Okay, I know where you are. So you, you don't use Cressman or Limerick at all, then?
I would lie if I said I didn't. If there's a major congestion, which is often there, and I want to go to the 401, then I can go down and take Cressman, or?
And just make a right.
Yeah. But often, I'll drive up through Deer Ridge, and come up through to the other traffic, even though it's a lot longer, and now with the change in Deer Ridge, it's got extended another block and a half, so.
If you're coming, if you're coming back from the 401, coming back home, would you make a left on to Limerick or Baxter, Limerick or Cressman, or would you go to the lights?
I haven't got much life left, and I would go up to Baxter and go to the light.
Okay.
You can sit for at least three to five minutes before you would turn into Limerick during most of the hours of the day. The exception might be, you know, nine, ten o'clock at night, when you could do it.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, and then councillor Gazola.
Thank you for coming in. I, I was going to ask you where you live. You're, you're down right in that corner beside the, where that big parking lot of Mothers' is.
That's right.
How long have you been there?
Been there just about nine years now.
I was going to say, I just wanted to point out that at one time, I think that was green space too, and now it's all parking lots.
The gentleman that owned the property and his wife built the house in nineteen sixty-seven, and similar, I, I believe the property that was in question has only had a couple of owners, and it's been enjoyed by residential people for however many years that whole community consisted of. And in our case, we looked for three, three-plus years to find a place in a community such as this, and we have no interest in a parking lot across the street, nor the light shining into our windows.
Thank you. Councillor Marsh.
Thank you, Mr. Sype, for coming in and sharing your perspective. I, I can't help but wonder, you know, about the fact that your, your house abuts a busy parking lot, so can you tell us about the impact of that on your ability to enjoy your neighbourhood?
My wife and myself had a number of lengthy conversations before I bought the property, because we back on the Mothers', and, and I believe that it's a detriment, okay? However, I offset that to the fact of the neighbourhood and some of the neighbours that we met, and in particular, that it's on sewage, or sorry, septic tank and water, okay? And that was the point I was making earlier. We bought knowing what was in there, and that was the limit of what I would accept, okay? To have something forced on To have something forced on people that have bought and knowing that they had a residential area and now you throw that in there, I can tell you, I would not have accepted it.
Did you perceive at all that the property value of a house that abuts a parking lot would be different from one that does not?
Yes. And one of the many things to look at, and if you come onto our property, we've got major trees, pine trees, 45, 50 feet high. And I have ripped everything out and planted another 15, 20 trees over the years to fill that zone of noise, filter it out. And it's acceptable. Is it as nice as having a nice neighbor with green grass and a pool behind? No, it isn't. But it's acceptable to us, and partly because of our age, the house is outfitted in a fashion that would be handicap accessible should we need it in the future. And so we offset one and the other and went ahead with the purchase.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, those are all the questions we have for you, Mr. Syke.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in. Those are all the delegations we have at this point in time. Are there any questions for staff? No questions for staff? We'll then move on to the recommendation. And they would ask, sorry? Okay, go ahead. There's a couple. Okay, Counselor Marsh.
Sorry, I was thinking of a question, and it was just, I want to know, is 11 Pioneer Drive, is it, does it receive water and sewage service or not? No. They all don't. Okay. So, sorry, Mr. Pinnard?
Well, it's already been answered by the gallery, but through the mayor, it's on private services.
Well, I understood that the neighborhood said that they, the neighbors said that they were not on the city system, but I wasn't sure if Pioneer Tower was. And if that affects, how does that affect a business? My guess is that Mothers' is on city water and sewage. Is it not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct.
Okay, and so was that a change since the neighborhood was created? Or, and also would 11 Pioneer Tower change to be put on city water and city sewage as a result of this zone change?
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor, the businesses along King Street were serviced after, for the most part, that residential area was established on private services. And those services were put in to service the commercial area on King Street. At the present time, there's no intention to upgrade the services of the community, including 11 Pioneer.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Singh, maybe just before you bring in, I do want to ask maybe one question of staff. Counselor Fernandez, do you have questions or comments? Question, okay, I'll let you go first. Go ahead.
This zone change will now change it from a residential to a commercial property? Is that, that's my understanding, right? It would be fully commercial. Will the assessment for the taxes change as well from residential to commercial?
Okay, so through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to clarify that the change is not to a commercial category. It's to actually add special provisions to actually allow the commercial use that is being proposed. And the bylaw that is before council this evening actually specifies exactly what would be allowed. And I will also note that the bylaw does include a few changes from the bylaw that was originally presented to deal with the follow-up items that were discussed at the subsequent meeting on April 3rd.
Okay, so then what I'm hearing from you is that it will not be zoned as a commercial business, therefore it will still be taxed as a residential property.
Mr. Chapman, do you want to jump in on that one?
Through Mr. Mayor, the assessment is not definitely, or not certainly based on the zoning. In this case, if it became a commercial use, it would be assessed as a commercial use for taxation.
So they've already admitted that they will be using it. A portion of it will be used as a commercial site. So who would make that determination?
Ultimately, it would be the Property Assessment Corporation.
So NPAC?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Unetsky, have questions with staff? Okay, go ahead.
Yep, a simple question, basically with the, from the discussion just happening now on the commercial. And I agree with the staff that this residential zoning with all the special provisions or regulations. But the property owner, will they need to get a commercial license or business license from the city's clerks?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not 100% sure. That's something I could follow up, but if a business license is required...
I thought that would be answered by the clerk.
Maybe let's, the clerk may be able to answer that one. But if one is required, we would definitely make them do that, of course.
Ms. Turner?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there are certain categories of professional services and healthcare providers that do not require a license. I'd have to look into it with our licensing staff to find out. So I can certainly look into that and provide an answer to all of council.
Okay, going back to my question then. Mr. Pinnard, last time at committee, there was a delegation that came in, and one of them presented some planning documents that referred to the fact that there was, that accesses along Baxter, Cressman and Limerick would be restricted. And if I recall correctly, staff comments were that those documents have been superseded by the new official plan. Do you recall that at all?
To you directly, Mr. Mayor, I'm not remembering that specific conversation. But I know that there have been references to some official plan policies that do not apply for this portion of the community.
That don't, sorry, say that again?
That do not apply for this portion of the community, it's for the King Street portion of the community. I don't know if that is the policies that you are referring to in your question.
And so this corner would be considered the King Street portion of the community?
No, it is not, no.
But the other thing, just to be clear, the new official plan would also not apply yet, is that not correct? Because the new official plan is in the midst of an appeal.
Yeah, there are some portions of our new official plan that are in fact in effect.
Okay. Because they weren't appealed, because they weren't part of the appeal?
Through the pre-hearings that have taken place at the Ontario Municipal Board, some portions of the plan that was adopted by council and subsequently approved have come into effect, they've been netted out. So so far, at the OMB, dealing with the official plan, we have gone through a netting out process, and we do have substantial portions of the official plan now that are in effect. But there are some that continue to be under appeal. I'm not aware of any appeals applying to this area.
Okay, so they likely were netted out then?
In all likelihood, but I don't have all of that before me this evening.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Singh, we'll now come to you for the recommendation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So item under the reports that could be considered by council for planning and strategic initiatives, committee, item number two, has been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Gallery Seelock.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Unetsky.
Comments?
Yep.
Thank you very much. I know we're now into comments here on this application, and I did provide a lot of comments on this application, it was considered back three weeks ago at committee level. To answer one of the residents' questions, whether we've been out there, I've been out there four times, and I've sat on the property doing traffic counts and monitoring it at different times of the day or evening, or weekday or weekend, just to get a feel as to what is happening out there. So I did take it, because when I was out in that area doing other matters, I just said, well, I'll just pop over here and stay here for 15, 20 minutes and watch what's happening. And I do agree, there's a big issue, big traffic issue, big problem, getting in and getting out. So the residents are correct on that matter. As part of my investigation in that area, I also took the liberty of going to all of commercial lanes in that Sports World, the Old Lulu site, and taking a look at what's, in terms of vacancy, in terms of those units and those different buildings that are there. A lot of them are brand new, still waiting to be occupied, and a lot of them have been there for quite a while. I counted over 24, and then I just stopped counting, 24 empty units where this particular business could go in, in any of those properties. And that's a great opportunity. And staff basically have done their zoning bylaw in terms of allowing this particular naturopath operation, which would be considered a health clinic, to go in those areas. I went through the zoning bylaw, and of 31 commercial industrial zones in that area, of the 31, 28 permit health office and health clinics. Perfect for it. And that's where staff would want commercial operations to go, into a commercial area. But now they also have a recommendation here to go into a residential area. And they want to leave it as zoned residential to say that it's not commercial, it's really residential with special provision to max, to limit the number of units of operation practitioners to four, although it's an unlimited when you go into the commercial operation. Parking is also an issue in terms of wanting 20, 22 spaces, numbers have been battered back and forth. But anyways, of those parking spaces, it really is a commercial operation. People are going to come by car, not going to walk there, maybe the odd one from up the street, but most of them would be clients from throughout Kitchener, Waterloo, and even Cambridge. I was asked in terms of on zoning, that there's no residential zone anywhere in Kitchener that permits a naturopath operation under a residential zone. And I said, I didn't find any health clinic at all. And then I was questioned by one of my colleagues here, that there's three of them. And so I investigated this further, and there are three properties designated residential, zoned residential. One of them is a home occupation operation, that's permitted as a health office, no problem there. And the other two are operating with several practitioners in there illegally. Well, I asked staff to check that out, to confirm whether they're there with approvals and they're not. They're operating illegally. So that's something that has to be further investigated, but that's a side story. When you look at the planning on this, staff have come up with a recommendation to saying that it's compatible with the official plan, with the regional official plan, with the PPS, the provincial policy statements, and the places to grow. And basically, it does, to the most degree, the commercial operation. But the existing use is more compatible than the operation of the naturopathic health clinic. The existing use is more compatible, and that's the way it should remain. So when you look at it overall, staff saying it's good planning? I disagree. Unfortunately, it's bad planning, and the application should be turned down.
Thank you, Counselor Unetsky. Mr. Pinnard, you wanted to add something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. I'd like to improve my response to one of the questions that was asked, and that is the, the site is currently not on full services, but it would be a condition that the services be extended to the site as a condition of approval.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Counselor Etherington, you're up next. Oh, hold on, I think you turned yourself off. Go, sorry, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just some very simple comments. I've heard this council and planning staff in recent years use the words many, many times that they are committed to the protection of established residential neighborhoods. And those are lovely words, and I hope they're not empty words, because in this case, in my opinion, we're doing no such thing in this location. This is one of Kitchener's most beautiful communities, and I cannot see how we're protecting that community through approving a clinic and an 18-vehicle parking lot. It's just not, that adds nothing to this community. And for that reason, I'll vote to oppose this application, and I hope other councilors do the same.
Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you. Over the number of meetings, we've heard a wide variety of reasons and rationales for this application to be turned down. Each one of them has spoken passionately about their site, about the scenicness of the area, about why they live there, why they moved there. And all of them say very much the same thing. They want to keep their neighborhood as it has been for those who've lived there for 30-plus years, or as it is for those who have moved there more recently. This area is not only unique to the city of Kitchener, but it's one of many unique areas. And we're going to hear about another unique area in short time, once we make the decision on this. But tonight, I was very impressed with Mr. Weaver's presentation, because what he said was something I had actually asked about, and that was the ability for this naturopathic clinic to be located in any number of other locations. He pointed out very clearly that they were walkable, that there were sensitive uses within walking distance of not only the clinic, but probably, and I don't know the location of the owner of 11 Pioneer Drive, but she indicated in her presentation, she wanted to be able to walk to work. And she wanted to make it welcoming and warm. Now, Mr. Weaver admitted he didn't go into some of those sensitive uses, but there are many uses throughout the community that are in strip malls, in plazas, in a variety of locations. And once you walk through that door, what was outside doesn't matter anymore. It's lovely, inviting, warm, welcoming, all of the things that the owner of 11 Pioneer Drive says she wants to offer her clientele. Not only would she have the benefit of offering that to her clientele at any of the other vacant locations, but she would have abundant parking, she would have snow removal, and she would have other businesses that could actually be ancillary to what she is offering to her clients. So because of that, and because I really do believe that this house should stay a house and should be a residential property, I'm not going to support this zone change. Our planning staff did a lot of work. I know that you don't feel that they heard you, but I can tell you, I've heard you. Your ward counselor has heard you, and now all of us here on council have heard you. So whether we agree or disagree, or we support or don't support, but we have heard you and we have listened to you. So I want you to know that I will not be supporting this tonight.
Counselor Marsh?
Thank you. I want to commend the residents who came out tonight and spoke so eloquently about their desire not to have this development. At the previous meeting, I was in favor of the application. I pointed out that the property is surrounded by commercial properties across the street on both sides. And I do appreciate that, I think it would actually not take away too much from the rest of the neighborhood to add another commercial use, a special commercial use to this property. But I can, I'm going to change my mind today, because I can see that the residents have made some excellent points regarding the fact that there are many commercial properties available within walking distance of this site. I didn't buy, and I still don't buy, the argument that it's a blockbusting development. It's not. It would have, it would be, in my opinion, something that could be compatible in the neighborhood. However, I am concerned as well about the congestion... However, I am concerned as well about the congestion on Baxter, and, and the fact that the, the driveway will, will be in conflict with an already difficult street to maneuver. I do want to also make sure that we commend staff on their work to make this application something that was, that is workable, and, and I do think that, you know, I, I do still feel torn, however, I, as I said, I will change my vote, because I, I think that it's just not gonna be something that is welcomed in this neighborhood. I don't see many neighbors feeling inclined to, to walk to this business if it's, if it's in this location. I do think that a walkable location, you know, will be possible. I, I personally have been to a naturopath whose office was, from the outside, really quite commercial-looking, but on the inside, very homey, very welcoming, and very relaxing. And so it, a homey location doesn't have to, doesn't have to be just from the outside, and it can be made to be a very holistic location from the inside out.
Thank you. Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I was hoping that I'd have the opportunity to speak at the end. Is that possible, or?
I can come back to you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Counselor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor Vervanevic. I too want to thank all the neighbors that came in to speak so eloquently. What I see here is a neighborhood, a community, and people that are connected together. I, I just don't see this clinic as a fit for this community here. I do want to thank our, our staff, our, me and our staff are working within rules and things that may be allowable and right, but in my heart, doesn't fit in this neighborhood and this community.
Counselor Davey?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I tend, I try not to speak as little as I can, but whenever I change a position, I think it's important to explain the rationale. This is a tough one. I, to be honest, I, I do feel for the applicant, because I know how difficult it is to go through this process. There's significant costs involved, and like it or not, unfortunately, there's assurances from staff that it does fit in with the official plan and that sort of thing to get to this stage. Having said that, I just, and I want to be clear, I, I think that if, when this goes onto the municipal board, the appeal body, I don't think that we have much of a chance. Having said that, I'm stepping back and I'm looking at everything that the residents have put forward in terms of the very nearby ability to have the exact same business in an appropriately zoned location, and also look at the fact, does this make, does this make practical sense? Does this make the community better? Does it make the city better? And the answer to that question, in my opinion, is no. So, this isn't typical, of my opinion, when it comes to planning matters, but I think this is a unique one, and I am sensitive to the, what I call, "commercial creep" in this instance, so I won't be supporting the zone change either.
Any other comments?
If not, I'll make mine, and then I'll come to you, Counselor Gazola. I've, I've been struggling with this, with this application, as I know I've articulated both last week at committee and in some discussions I've had with residents in the, in the intervening week. I actually went out earlier today and spent some time driving the area, and while I've been to the businesses in, in that area many times over the, over the past numerous years, I, I really focused on the property, the flow of traffic in the area, as well as what was happening in terms of the surrounding businesses, vacancies, and so on. And I struggle with this, because on one side, I fundamentally believe that, as a community, we need to start changing our, our attitudes around some of this stuff. We, we can't collectively be talking about sustainability and walkability and, and managing growth and so on, and not look at some of these alternative uses from, from time to time, particularly if they are, they're not grossly incompatible with, with the neighborhood. Nobody's talking about putting a factory here, nobody's talking about putting a car dealership here. It was a medical clinic. And so on, on that front, I don't see it as something as being hugely incompatible with the, with the surrounding neighborhood. Having said that, and after my visit today, I paid a lot of attention to, to traffic flow, to some of the challenges around the Pioneer Tower Road, Baxter Place, and, and King Street intersection. It is a complex intersection without a doubt. I was there at a non-peak time, and there was a lot of traffic flow going through, and, you know, people trying to figure out, okay, where should I line up, and so on. And presumably, those are people who, you know, regularly are, are in that neighborhood. And as I said, it wasn't at peak time. I came at it from Pioneer Tower Road, I came at it from sort of the, where the golf course is up towards Baxter and King, to get those different perspectives, as well as from the Mother's parking lot. I think the other piece, in particular, as I came up to King and looked across the way, it, it hit me, this whole issue of vacancies. Not the ones just along King Street, and as has been pointed out, there are numerous ones, but the fact that the Sports World Crossing development has also not fully developed because of presumably the amount of vacancy in the area. And when Sports World Crossing originally started building, there was a bit of an economic downturn, and so they cut back their, their development, and you can see there where there's areas that remain undeveloped going forward. And while it's not our collective responsibility to say, okay, you know, how do we help out these people who are, you know, where there's vacancies? I have to say, is it worth making a change when, within that walking distance, as has been pointed out by others, there's numerous options that either exist, or quite frankly, could be built, that already are, are commercial properties? And so when I looked at all of these issues and, and weighed out the, the pros and cons and, and the balances, and my concern that we can't necessarily guarantee, if there were further applications, you know, what would the impact be on the properties where we heard from two delegations tonight, namely, the ones on Edge Hill and Baxter, on, on that corner? You know, could they see change in the future? And then what would happen across the street? Again, as someone has said, I think it was Counselor Davey, I don't think this, or, or someone else, this wouldn't necessarily be blockbusting, and I don't think they're hugely incompatible uses, but I can see the concerns of the neighborhood and the impact it would have. And so as a result of that, I've decided to not support the application this evening, and, and support the, the concerns that have been voiced by the, by the neighborhood.
Counselor Gazola?
Yes, thank you. I'll try to be quick. I, I want to say a few words, that this has been a long and hard debate. It's been going on for a lot of the people involved here for over a year. And I really want to point out that all the parties to this issue have worked extremely hard, that it's, starting with the applicant, with city staff, with the entire neighborhood. The applicant came forward with a proposal that they felt would benefit not only themselves, but also the community. It didn't work out that way. Staff worked extremely hard and did their work skillfully. They provided excellent customer service. They did everything in their power to make the proposal fit, and that, that is good for our staff to, to work in that fashion. They made, and they made the proposal fit. They felt that was acceptable, but unfortunately, it's not the best fit. It's being made to fit, but not the best fit. I think we have the best fit there now, and until we have something that improves upon that, we should leave it alone. Now, turning to the neighborhood, they have become engaged and participated to a degree that I have not seen that often in my forty-five years around Kitchener City Hall. They did their homework and prepared some very strong cases. There were many emotional aspects, but you can't help with that. And, and the end, and I keep going back to our neighborhood strategy, there's no question in this case that the neighborhood led, and now it's up to the city to support. That's what we're advertising, neighborhood-led, city-support. And I, I want to take a half a second to quote from an editorial in the newspaper, which I think is really, says, it says that "The neighborhood strategy shouldn't impede growth", and that's important, "but it shouldn't remove common sense protection for neighbors." And I'm hoping that that's where we're going tonight. There, there have been a lot of things said. One of the, there have been so many points, things, that I don't want to repeat them, but I, I do want to emphasize the fact that the, we're not preventing the applicant from carrying out her business. There's plenty of commercial space, just as convenient to the applicant as this residential area. And you really have to question whether the convenience of one person trumps the wishes of the entire neighborhood. I again want to remind ourselves around this horseshoe that the acquisition of a home is for most people the largest single expenditure in their lifetime. Nothing has greater importance to them, to us, and we have to do everything we can to respect the castle. We heard from a young couple tonight that have just moved in there, and, and I, also, we received a memo this morning that stated, Mr. Volprey, who lives in that neighborhood, said, "How can anyone buying a house in Kitchener have any assurance that what they buy today will be protected by future councils?" And it's something we, we have to do. He goes on to say, "You, we, we want the city to be seen as progress, as a progressive city," which we are. Finally, I'm not recommending that council commit to allocating large sums of money to fight this issue in another higher court. I am asking, and I hope council will all support us, I'm asking council to support the neighborhood, so that if it does come to a court of a higher level, that the community can stand at the hearing with the knowledge that they have had the support of their own council and community. Turning down this application does not put us in conflict with staff. We merely have different viewpoints, and that's healthy. That's good.
Counselor Gazola, you can wrap up.
Okay, quickly, this is a, this is a neighborhood, well-established neighborhood, that there are, they have a considerable background in planning issues. My, our, our former planning commissioner for both the city and the region lived in that area for, for many years. So, I, I want to just point out that I think if we fail this community today, I know that in a few years, I'm afraid, my biggest fear, that if we fail them today, that a future council will be dealing with a similar issue, and in that case, precedent will have been set, and it, the debate will not take as long. In conclusion, if I'm hearing correctly, I, I'm really pleased, and I, I do want to thank all members of council for taking the time to go and visit, other than in their own words, to go out to the community and see. And I think it's amazing when we do that, when we all do that, it's amazing how our perspectives can grow and sometimes change. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. A recorded vote has been requested. All those opposed? The motion does not carry. Folks, if I can please ask you not to clap. Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming in this evening and sharing your viewpoints with us on this issue. We'll break for one minute or two minutes while the, I'm sure, you're welcome to stay for the rest, but I kind of figure you'll, you'll probably be like the last group. Counselor Janetski? We got a council meeting to continue with? We'll now move on to item 6C, sixty-nine Amherst Drive, and we have four delegations who are here, and we will start with Ms. Kristen Barisdale, GSP Group.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Vervanevic, and members of council, as well as members of the public. I'm here to speak to you briefly tonight as a follow-up to the letter that we submitted to the city on April twenty-first, on behalf of Owl Properties. I respectfully request reconsideration of your decision from the April third, two thousand and seventeen Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee meeting. On behalf of Owl Properties, I ask that you consider approval of the proposed official plan amendment and zone change application in accordance with the staff recommendation of report number CSD-17-026. The provincial planning policy framework encourages municipalities to promote intensification and redevelopment where existing infrastructure and community services can be optimized. More specifically, the provincial policy statement requires municipalities to provide a full range and mix of housing types to meet the social well-being and health of all residents of the community. residents of the community. Similar to provincial planning directives, the city of Kitchener Official Plan encourages an appropriate range, variety, and mix of housing types, tenures, densities, and affordability to satisfying the varying and broad ranges of housing needs throughout the community of all stages of life, including students. Conestoga College is a longstanding institution in the Lower Dune community. Established in 1967, the neighborhood immediately surrounding the college has evolved and grown. In more recent years, the Lower Dune community has evolved to include newer alternative forms of low-density residential development, including townhouses. While the neighborhood remains predominantly low-density, single-detached housing, it's our understanding that the majority of the homes that immediately surround the property, including those internal to Amherst Drive, Pinnacle Drive, Dune Valley Drive, and Durham Drive, are not owner-occupied, but rather leased to students. The college has grown tremendously over the past ten years and will continue to grow into the foreseeable future. Conestoga College provides residence for first-year students. Upper-year students are required to secure their own accommodations. As noted in this correspondence submitted by Conestoga College in support of the development of student-purpose-built housing, colleges in Ontario do not receive funding for construction and operation of student residences. The demand for an adequate supply of suitable, safe, and proximate rental accommodations in Lower Dune remains constant. The proposed development is comprised of forty-seven stacked townhouse dwellings, forty of which are four-bedroom units, six of which are two-bedroom units, and one three-bedroom manager's unit. In addition to the, in addition, the building containing the manager's unit has also been designed to include indoor amenity space for residents, laundry facilities, and indoor bicycle parking. It is important to note that only the manager's unit and associated common space is four stories in height, and it is located centrally within the proposed development. The balance of the proposed development is comprised of three-story stacked townhouses. Residents of Lower Dune have expressed significant concerns regarding student behavior within the community. While some of the concerns are beyond the scope and the merit of this application, Owl Properties has worked with city staff to create a student housing option that is appropriate and can effectively manage onsite, be managed onsite, and provides the city with the appropriate tools to control and monitor accommodations on a yearly basis. Staff and members of council seem to be consistent in their opinion that purpose-built student accommodation is a preferred solution to address the needs of students in Lower Dune. This type of project will not be provided for on the college lands. The subject property and proposed development provides a well-designed response to the need for adequate, suitable, and safe student housing in Lower Dune. Owl Properties initiated discussions with the city back in 2009 regarding the proposed development, and has continued to collaborate with city staff to prepare a development concept that is suitable in size and scale to the round, suitable in size and scale for the community, and addresses a number of concerns that have been expressed throughout the process, including sufficient onsite amenity space, appropriate building setbacks and buffers, and variation in building facades. As summarized in our planning justification report and confirmed in the staff report and recommendation, the proposed development has been designed to integrate a different type of low-rise housing form within the existing community while maintaining similarities in size, scale, massing, and density. It is our opinion that the proposed development is an appropriate and realistic alternative to the conversion of more single-family dwellings to student accommodations in Lower Dune. Again, we respectfully request council consider approval of the proposed official plan amendment and zone change application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are some questions. Counselor Singh, are you, did you plug in to move the motion?
Um, yeah.
Okay. Well, how about I ask your question, and you can move it at the end. Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Kristen, for kind of reiterating some of the key aspects of changes that have been incorporated into the proposal to make it somewhat more sensitive to the area residents. If this were to be turned down by council, what would be your client's next step?
We've had numerous discussions over the past three weeks as to how we are going to proceed with the application, including what the alternatives are for further consideration beyond this council. And while the applicant hasn't made a final decision, depending on the outcome of tonight's meeting, he'll have to consult with his solicitor to move forward.
Now, honestly speaking, even though I, through the planning committee, I supported the application because, you know, it was staff-supported, and I acknowledge some of the efforts that were made by Owl Properties in making this a better purpose-built student residence. It's hard to, you know, filter out the overwhelming criticism that continues to come from the neighborhood. And I think we need to acknowledge that. Apart from the fact that it may be a good design, staff may be supporting it, there must be something still missing that is still, you know, creating that type of animosity in the neighborhood. Are there additional steps that your client is willing to take? Perhaps if there's an opportunity, if they could go back, we look at the design, the density, working with staff, working with the neighborhood, so a better compromise could be found?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. I think that there's opportunities to review the proposal and to better improve it. However, I do have concerns about the extent of which those approves, improvements or changes can be made. As discussed, we've been working with city staff on this application since 2009. This is actually the fourth or fifth rendering or alternative design that's been put forth to staff that we feel has best incorporated and addressed the number of concerns of residents. So at this point, it's our feeling that we've kind of maximized or optimized, I guess, if you will, the balance of whether or not the site is feasible, and balancing the concerns and feedback from residents in the community.
So you're not seeking for an opportunity for this application for, perhaps, to be deferred, perhaps so giving time for your client to at least look at it one more time?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we're not making that request this evening.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Marsh.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristen, for your presentation and your, you know, your position is clear. I want to know, actually, before I ask all my questions, Mr. Mayor, do we have any delegations from Conestoga College itself today?
I don't know. There's four other delegations. I'm not sure where they're from.
Okay. So, Kristen, I'm just going to assume that they're not here. So, what I don't understand is, you know, why isn't Conestoga College at the table? If there's so much in support of this application, and if they're in such need of purpose-built student housing, which I think everyone can agree that they are, then why aren't they here at the table?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I can speculate on the feedback that we've received to date from them. It's my understanding that colleges in Ontario do not receive the same type of funding that universities, for example, receive. So part of the funding package that goes to universities includes considerations for building appropriate onsite residence and accommodations for students. So, for example, the University of Waterloo has residents that are actually within the University of Waterloo campus.
Yeah, but...
But just, just, sorry, just to be clear, though, that's your speculation? You're not speaking on behalf of the college?
Absolutely. That's right. No, I understand that. So I just, let's make sure that that's clear to everyone listening, that this is just your opinion. So I, but I was trying to ask you if you have had direct conversation with Conestoga College about that. But I take it that you haven't.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we have two letters that were submitted from the college on behalf of the application. In the first letter, they actually specified that they do not receive funding from the province with regards to student residence.
Yes.
There's also been collaboration back and forth with some of the students as part of the initial design of the development. The first concepts that were prepared and presented to the city were actually a student project or collaboration, if you will, with Conestoga College, both the design school as well as the students themselves.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, I mean, a quick Google search of Ontario college residents, you know, we can see that Conestoga actually does have an official residence off-campus or close by. We've got on-campus residences at several Ontario colleges. So somehow, they've made it work for them regardless of a funding model that they're, that Conestoga is saying doesn't, doesn't work for them. We can, we can see examples of how onsite, on-campus residences can work, and in my opinion, they should work. This, this development as proposed is, is too, oh, sorry, I'm getting into comments. That's, I just really wanted to understand from you what, where Conestoga College is in all of this. And so, thank you for your answers.
Counselor Iannidis.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. Thanks, Kristen. Can you give me just a breakdown of, at a high level, what was the original proposal that your client was looking at for this site?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the original proposal that was discussed with the city as part of our first round of pre-submission consultation was a six-story, multiple residential apartment building with onsite parking.
Six-story. Okay. That's, that's a significant difference in what's being proposed. Is there any other concessions that were made besides that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, one of the biggest changes that we saw even from the application, the concept that accompanied the application was the creation of the central manager's unit. So to provide for that onsite, appropriately managed accommodations of the students, as well as included in that unit indoor common amenity space, so that the students have an opportunity to congregate internal to the buildings, as well as appropriate layouts that there's outdoor amenity space that's located immediately in front of the manager's unit again, so that there's supervision of the activities that are happening onsite.
Okay. I'm going to ask sort of a similar question that Counselor Singh sort of discussed. If your client has to go back to the, from the decision that we make, and if we don't support this application, is there a chance that this may go back to a six-story?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Owl Properties, I think, is quite happy with the concept that they have right now. The three-story stacked apartment buildings and the manager units, I think that there are some elements of the zoning bylaw request with regards to possible lodging and licensing that we would like to re-explore if this went beyond the council chambers, but I'm not sure that there's an appetite to revert back to a six-story apartment building.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Was there any discussion in relation to a deferral?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we did have had some discussions internally here, as well as I know that Mr. Yon of Owl Properties had some discussions with Counselor Fernandez about it. But as we went through all of the different options that we have available to us, we felt that it was best at this point to proceed with whatever the recommendation will be at this council meeting, and then to make a decision on how we move forward after that.
Bit of a gamble. Thank you, anyway.
Yeah, let's try to avoid the rhetorical questions. Counselor Fernandez, did you want to ask your question, or go ahead?
It wasn't, it wasn't a question. It was in response to Counselor Marsh's question, but I'm, I have an understanding as to why Conestoga College does, has not entered into further student residence, and it's, Mr. Tibbetts has said it publicly, that he feels that his student population drives in, and hence the reason they have thirteen parking lots, and that there is no real need for purpose-built student housing on their lands.
Thank you. Counselor Singh, are you just waiting another question, or? Okay, go ahead.
It'll be very brief, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted a further clarification on Counselor Iannidis's question, and, because you touched on it, and, but I, just for the benefit of all members of council, you said that although that you, your client probably wouldn't revert back to a six-story type density of a development, but you may reconsider taking off some of the provisions of licensed lodging and amenity space and all that? Can you give a more clear answer on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think that there is, we understand the city's lodging license, lodging house bylaw. We also understand that it is not universally applied in Dune South, and we do have some concerns as to whether the lodging house license infringes slightly on zoning people rather than uses. So these are all things I think that we would like to discuss and explore, considering the outcome of this application going forward. But that is one component of the recommendation that we have a bit of discomfort with.
Now, I'll take a step further. Might put you in a difficult spot, but I'll ask it anyways, because this is, you know, a final attempt at this, depending on where it will go. If council were to support your client's application, your client also has other properties in the neighborhood as well that serve student housing purpose?
Through you, Mayor, yes, that's my understanding.
Would he be willing to apply for lodging license for those properties as well?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not involved with the management of those properties, but that's absolutely something that I think could be put forward and discussed with Owl Properties.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Those are all the questions we have of you. Thank you. Our next delegation is Mr. Scott Murray. Welcome, Mr. Murray.
Thank you. Mayor Verbanovic, members of city council, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the permanent residents, taxpayers of Lower Dune Citizens Committee, we know that council's vote against the official plan amendment and zone change applications for 69 Amherst Drive on April 3rd was not the end of this issue. In many ways, it signaled the beginning. As such, it is important for everyone to know, we remain committed to working with the city of Kitchener, Conestoga College, the students, and licensed developers to address the student housing issues in Lower Dune. It is more important for everyone to understand, we are not against the students. We are not against purpose-built student housing in Lower Dune. Yes, we have fought, and we will continue to fight, the applications for 69 Amherst, as the proposed development is clearly inappropriate and the location is clearly wrong. However, so there is no misunderstanding whatsoever. As stated in our committee's letter to the mayor, councilors, and planning staff on November 9th, 2015, our press release of April 4th, 2017, and the email we sent to the mayor and council on April 5th, 2017, quote, "Understanding the need, we would welcome well-planned, purpose-built student housing in another suitable location." We heard Counselor Singh's comments on 570 News throughout the day. He said, "Purpose-built student housing is the best way to address the lack of student housing in the Dune area." Agreed. However, that's only part of the solution. We also know that having licensed lodging house student accommodation for all buildings in Lower Dune, not just one or two, is critical to ensuring the safety of the students and the safety for our neighborhood. To that point, immediately following the April 3rd meeting, our committee reached out to Justin McLaughlin, Vice President, Conestoga Students. We congratulated Justin on his excellent presentation, extended our offer of support, and pledged to work with the students. The next day, we put Justin in contact with Ryerson University's Student Fairs team, who were recently honored for advancements in student housing and connecting students with the community. At Justin's request, our committee and the students will be meeting in May to discuss options and opportunities. In the Kitchener Post on April 5th, when speaking of the student housing issue, Mayor Verbanovic said, "The college definitely does play a role." We agree, and we ask Mr. Tibbetts to please join the conversation. I don't have the exact figures, but I believe Conestoga College has well over a hundred acres of undeveloped land, and I am in no position to tell the college what to do, but one only needs to read the papers and watch TV to know they have land they're willing to sell. If they don't want to be in the student housing business, fine, but look at Queen's University, the University of Wealth, and others for examples of partnerships for the benefit of student housing. The college could sell, lease, or partner with private developers for housing and mixed-use retail. That would provide suitable facilities and even jobs for the students and income for the college. We also know that Drewlow Holdings, the developers of the College of Uptowers by Pioneer Park Plaza, own land across from the college on the other side of Homer Watson. There are a number of sites in and around the college that would be suitable for well-planned, purpose-built student housing. The land at 69 Amherst Drive is not the only option, far from it. As for the deferral of a final decision, as suggested by Counselor Singh on 570 News today, please remember, a March 30th article in the Record accurately reported that we argued. accurately reported that we argued, "With the number of students being forced into such a small area, the proposed development at 69 Amherst was too intense." In response, the next paragraph stated, and I quote,[611.92][612.22]"A project with less density isn't financially feasible," Mr. Yon said. "It just would not work." Why then would anyone expect that a new site plan for the Owl Properties student housing development would be any less inappropriate? But we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. For now, there's work to be done. The permanent residents, taxpayers of Lower Dune, look forward to a meeting with all stakeholders: the City of Kitchener, Conestoga College, Conestoga College students, bylaw, licensed developers, and, yes, even landlords. Let's all come to the table to discuss the student issues in Lower Dune. Let's work together and find a solution that works for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. There are some questions for you. Counselor Singh.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Scott, for coming again and presenting. And you mentioned that you were able to listen to some of my comments on 570. And hopefully, you were able to... Hopefully, the neighborhood and yourself were able to decipher from my comments that, you know, I'm not negating the concerns of the neighborhood. The issues are that there is a lacking and deficit of student housing in that neighborhood. And there aren't options on the table right now. They may come in the future. Conestoga College may step up to the plate and seeking out partnerships, but that's not the case right now. We've got to look at the environment that exists currently. So, if... I'll ask the similar question I asked the applicant's representative. If this gets turned down, you know, in support of the neighborhood opposition, are yourself, the neighborhood, are willing to continue on that advocacy and defending your position if and when it gets challenged at the OMB?
Absolutely. Our point, I hope, is very clear, that we're not against the purpose-built student housing. We have said from the start, it's that location. We understand. You made it very clear on April 3rd that there were concessions that have been agreed to, that I may be putting words in people's mouths, but this is the best deal we could expect. Well, maybe from a planning perspective, but not from the perspective of the residents.
No, that's fine, but I want the neighborhood and yourself to be cognizant that... You said it best, that, you know, us making a decision is just the beginning.
Absolutely.
This will carry on. This most likely will get challenged at the OMB. And at that point, will the neighborhood be still willing to take it that step further to defend your position, rather than just leaving it up to the OMB and the applicant making their case?
Absolutely.
And if they were to be successful, and that's been my concern, the neighborhood will lose out far more than they would if this development were to go forward.
Understood.
And just wanted to see that if there's a commitment from yourself and the neighborhood in your assessment, would you be willing to carry on a fight at a different level?
No question. Absolutely.
Okay, just wanted to see that commitment from the neighborhood. To get both perspectives on both sides from the applicant as well as the neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Counselor Fernandez.
Thanks, Scott, for your eloquent presentation and also for some new points that you brought out tonight. And that's always important and critical. One of the things that I noted that you said was about partnerships. And, you know, Counselor Marsh has been, you know, sort of drilling down and asking, you know, why isn't the college at the table and those kind of things? You've mentioned a couple of other universities, Ryerson. The partnerships that they have, do they include the list of people that you've listed today?
Like Queen's University?
Yeah, Queen's, Ryerson, Guelph.
Yes.
Yes.
I can't speak for Ryerson. My reference to Ryerson was the fact that we connected Justin McLaughlin with the Student Affairs Team.
Sorry, you're right.
They have a program called Your Neighbor. Innovative work with student housing, I believe, on-campus student housing, and connecting the students to the community. But we know for a fact, Queen's University, University of Guelph... We understand that community colleges don't receive the funding. But go on campus of any school. Partnerships are the norm. It used to be people selling coffee out of a corner for their society. Now it's Tim Hortons, you know.
You're right, there's lots of partnerships. I mean, we see that with the hospice, right? I mean, that's a partnership with the college as well.
Absolutely.
One of the things I wanted to... You mentioned the Drewlow Buildings, College View, they're called, right? Since the opening of those buildings, what has happened to the vacancy rate within the Lower Dune area? Has it increased or decreased?
It's hard for me to say, but there have been four rent signs year-round. Absolutely year-round. The ads never seem to come down.
You've also pointed out a number of other alternative locations. And from your perspective, from the neighborhood perspective, do you think that those would offer appropriate, safe, purpose-built student housing similar to what Mr. Yon has proposed?
Absolutely. And it's not for us to say how the city should develop with, you know, multi-use retail. Anyone who lives in the Lower Dune area will tell you, "We need a decent grocery store." You know, there need... One of the issues that we have maintained about 69 Amherst, along with the lack of parking, and anyone who has ever driven down Dune Valley or Pinnacle, particularly on the weekend, knows what I'm speaking of. One of the issues that we've talked about is the density. The area in question, at this point, it's a three-ring circus. Try at... It doesn't matter what the building looks like. Add another 172 students. It's unreasonable to think that on a Friday night or a Saturday night, they're going to stand in the courtyard. It's not going to happen. They need a place to go. There are no restaurants down there. There are no grocery stores. The closest that we have is Pioneer Park Plaza. Now, there are... There is talk that there is going to be developed, but it's probably still not enough. You know, that's why, obviously, the residents, we look at the empty space on both sides of the 401, you know, and we say, "Why not? Why can't you do this?"
Okay, thank you. I have good news for you. That is happening on Pioneer Park Plaza, and it should be happening soon. Thank you very much for your presentation and for your comments.
Counselor Davy.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, for your presentation. I... At committee, I did not support this development, and I'm still... It was an easy decision. I'm still struggling with it. So, one of the questions I need to ask you is, are you clear that if this is turned down, that the applicant does not have to go back, go to the OMB with the same proposal? They can go to the OMB with, from your perspective, a worse proposal, a more intense proposal that doesn't have a supervisor? And are you prepared to take that risk?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just want to be 100% clear on that. Thank you.
Counselor Singh.
Staff for clarification? So, should I ask now or just after the nomination?
Wait till the end unless it absolutely needs to be asked now?
No, I can wait.
Okay. Those are all the questions we have of you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Mr. Murray. Next up, we have Ms. Shawna Scott. Welcome, Ms. Scott.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Shawna Scott, and my parents and I live at the Mill Club in Lower Dune. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is my take on the situation. By rejecting the lodging house proposal, City Hall will be stepping back to envision a vibrant city hub, putting intensification into appropriate context before the area is developed piecemeal and short of its potential, where a short-term student housing issue is leveraged into a community vision, where we're not so tightly bound by the rules and protocols that are designed to guide and protect, that the result is one of tunnel vision rather than empowerment. First, respect is due to the permanent residents who are committed to their neighborhood. They must be battle-weary after two years, but their voices have been heard. Have you read their letters? A perfect example of hashtag "Love your hood." Next, I see a landlord and aspiring developer with a business opportunity who has learned he is not the only stakeholder. Let's be frank in saying that the student housing conversions have made a terrible first impression. And lodging house? Schmudging house, seriously. It seems the premise of the plan to meet a student housing crisis has mostly been mitigated. College Recomms has beaten you to the punch. Intents is already built tenants down the street. Intensity can take many forms, not just big, high, and in-your-face, not just maximizing ratios while sacrificing room to breathe and live. I actually propose that Owl Properties and Cook Homes collaborate on a new plan encompassing the whole infill area, one more fitting of this peaceful neighborhood reminiscent of cottage country. Innovative bourbon cottages and microhousing designed for college staff, residents, and students. Not cookie-cutter, Bayesian, boring, homegrown, green and sustainable, cutting-edge technology and amenities precedent-setting and colorful and soulful, quality over quantity. Beyond that, when I think of college towns, I think of independent restaurants and shops, creative and entrepreneurial, colorful and eclectic and multicultural, and this neighborhood is definitely not that. This is a food desert. The empty and underdeveloped commercial space adjacent to Conestoga's student residence is full of missed opportunities. These two parcels of land were up for sale in 2015, and according to a recent online ad, A and W and Taco Bell drive-throughs and a petrol station are slated for 2018. Given the advertised that the average household income in his excess of $100,000 and a daytime population of about 60,000, this falls far short of our needs. So, if this proposal is in the city planning pipeline, let me be the first to object. Mediocre is not acceptable. I would raise all its there, build stacked student residences there and a public food court of sorts with a communal courtyard, pop-up from downtown restaurants, ethnic street food and barbecue stalls, a green juice bar, farmer's market, and weekly food trucks, a mural wall to block the sights and sounds of the 401 and to advertise a local food oasis, a pedestrian bridge over Homer Watson Boulevard. You aren't what you eat, so let's make it nourishing, energizing, and alive. To quote the mayor, "The connections that happen over food are universal." This vision extends to Pioneer Park Plaza, where Lablaw's redevelopment plans should make way for a well-curated grocery store, inspired more by Farmboy and Vincenzo's than no frills. And Conestoga College needs to join the conversation and set high standards before selling their soybean field to just any developer. So, as I've reframed the situation, I hope City Council prioritizes this neighborhood. A developer and city planner upgrade their idea. An immigrant entrepreneur decides to start a food or student-focused business, and a tech company connects to a digital Kitchener initiative. Even if you prefer to color within the lines, this plan ticks a lot of boxes. Let's move forward on the review of Lower Dune land use and the creation of the Homer Watson, Conestoga College City Node Master Plan. The framework is there, but let's not just be defined as a highway exit gateway or a new city node. Lower Dune could become a destination for community and cultural events at the college rather than a drive-through neighborhood. A vibrant town hub, a cohesive balance of history and modernity, where all residents peacefully coexist if not thrive. Let's maximize potential and rivalize rather than homogenize. Soulful, not just new and shiny. Until then, I call for a moratorium to be instated on all development approvals and zoning bylaw and official plan amendments. Rather than align with just one priority, let's align with many. Let's make a plan, and let's walk our talk. This is a defining moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. We have some questions. Counselor Fernandez.
Actually, Sean, I don't have any questions. Thank you for your very eloquent and interesting and challenging presentation. You certainly put out a lot of interesting ideas, and, you know, I would love to see some new and interesting and challenging restaurants. And the college has so many opportunities that they could really be putting our students out there to do some really interesting and wonderful things in our community. So, thank you for your ideas.
There could be a much more vibrant community, and I think that's why we need to step back and focus on the master plan. I believe it's number 57 and 58 in 2005 Strategic Action Plan.
Yeah.
And I know they're pending, but let's... This is a defining moment, as I say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Netski. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, thanks. Yeah, thank you very much for your presentation. Extremely eloquent, and I like the symbolism and the thought and the vision that you had portrayed and the analysis that you did, both pro and con, on that was excellently done. I really don't have a question, but just congratulations. I know your job well done.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Those are all the questions we have. And the last delegation is Darrell Howes-Jones. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Darrell Howes-Jones. I live on Dune Valley Drive, and I'm a member of the Committee for Lower Dune. There are two issues were raised in the last council meeting of April 3rd, which I would like to address and request further consideration. But before that, there are a few comments were made about Conestoga College as if there seemed to be a misunderstanding. The Committee of Lower Dune actually met with the college. We met with Mike Denning, the Vice President of Student Relations and their solicitor with regards to development in Lower Dune. I, on several occasions, have met personally with John Tibbetts to discuss the issue, and they're not operating in a vacuum. As stated earlier, Mr. Tibbetts said that 70% to 80% of the students commute, and the need for student housing in the area and it's not justified. We met with Mike Denning with regards to specifically the Owl Development's property, and originally a letter was produced, I don't have it, but I think it was 2014, by the Vice President of Student Relations at that time, which supported the student housing proposal. I talked to John Tibbetts about that, and he said, well, that letter was submitted, the person retired immediately afterward, and the letter wasn't properly vetted, and nobody thought anything much more about it. So that was left as part of the paperwork. So we met Mike Denning again, their counselor, talked to John Tibbetts, and they came, essentially came back and produced another letter of October 23, 2015, and essentially, I'll just quote, "We are committed to working cooperatively with our neighbors within the context of the City of Kitchener's zoning guidelines." Period. I just wanted to leave it at that. Now, the issues I want to address with, the first issue, now several counselors asked why Owl Properties' land could not be included in the proposed Cook Homes Townhouse development that has wide support in the community. I talked with Cook Homes, in fact, I've been speaking with Cook Homes for several years about this, to see if there was renewed interest in developing the entire parcel of land with Owl Properties after the last committee meeting. I understand Cook Homes was in touch with Owl Properties to discuss a joint venture. In this conceptual joint venture, Oliver's land would support 24 townhouse units, the Cook Homes would support 75. The strip of land between the two parcels would provide for a transportation corridor even with the failure to produce a small strip of land between the two parcels owned by a particular lady, so the development was possible. The problem is, Cook Homes wants their development to be market-driven as single-family homes. They are not in the business of student housing, they build family residences, and the financial model for student housing is not what they want to pursue or have experience in. Also, their studies have indicated a high level of risk of pursuing student housing in the Dune area. The negotiations fell apart. The sticking point is that Owl Properties wants their portion of the townhouses to be for student housing. According to Cook Homes, having one quarter of a townhouse development as student housing mixed with single-family residences is a recipe for disaster and would compromise their Essentially, within the same project, they represent two entirely different models which are, financial models which are incompatible. So everything fell apart. If Owl Properties had pursued this development, it would be very financially rewarding for both properties. There's a way out, and unfortunately, things fell apart. This was our dream as a committee. We have been talking to these people for years about a project like this, and we thought that Oliver could walk away, be financially rewarded by developing this, and move to another location, develop student housing, even if it was across the street, you know, is more appropriate. But that didn't happen. Mr. Oliver wants student housing there, period. The second issue, it was brought to the attention of the counselors during the meeting of April 3rd that Owl Properties operates a number of boarding houses in the Dune area. Seven houses were listed, a fact sheet was given by a committee member to all the counselors. We feel that these are illegal under the existing bylaws, and the counselors requested staff at the meeting to investigate this further as to possible bylaw and building permit violations. Some of these houses have up to 10 bedrooms. As a follow-up, the Citizens Committee would like to know the status of that investigation. We'd also like to know, does this represent an ethical issue for council and planning staff regards to this application? I think it's a natural question, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Some questions. Counsel Fernandez.
Thank you, Darrell. Appreciate the shared information that you brought forward tonight, and I appreciate your presentation. I'm not exactly sure what you are inferring when you're saying a conflict or a challenge is, what was the word you used in your last sentence?
It's ethical. It's an ethical issue. If a proponent is operating house, student housing in the area that are considered, not by the bylaws, can an application justifiably be accepted by this applicant for something similar in the neighborhood? It's a natural question. I deal with, my background is dealing with projects and public consultation, and the ethics in public consultation have to be rock-solid. Conflicts of interest, et cetera, has to be dealt with to the minutest scale in issues like this. So, you know, in my experience working on hundreds of projects, this is a natural question that should be asked.
Okay, and I understand your question now. I don't have any legal background, and I would, I mean, I'm not sure whether legal can answer that question publicly or whether it's a caucus issue, but I know that we are in the process of investigating the number of houses that were talked about, but we also have to be careful when we talk about enforcement. Excuse me. We don't want to jeopardize any work that's being done with relation to that, so, I mean, just wanted to give you, it's not a fulsome answer, it's at least something that the residents can know that we are working on some enforcement issues. We don't want to be talking about that at this point in time.
Okay.
And I look to you, Mr. Mayor, if there is a response required from legal with regards to ethics. I don't believe that there is any ethics that have been in contravention from our staff in relation to working on this application.
No, I would, I would agree with you. I don't know if Ms. McDonald wants to comment at all, or, I don't think so, but it's up to you, Ms. McDonald.
Through you, your worship, I don't think there's anything that I can add to the comments at this point. I don't know enough about the detail to provide you any advice, and if I was to give you advice, it would be in a closed session of council.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Fernandez.
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Okay, those are all the questions we have of you, sir. Thank you. Counsel Singh, I believe you said you had questions of staff you wanted to ask?
To how the property currently sits. What's the size of the parcel? Remind me. I know it's in the report, but it'll be easier for you to quickly say it.
Through the mayor, .7 hectares.
How many acres? Sorry. If you don't know, that's okay.
I don't. We can Google it.
That's all right. So it's currently zoned what?
The current zoning is residential three, and there also is a special use provision to prohibit duplexing.
So the, could the applicant still do a, you know, for, like as a subdivision plan and build housing there? Is the parcel situated in a way that could accommodate that? Was that ever a part of the iteration of designs for residential housing?
Through the chair, we've never reviewed a subdivision application for these lands.
Okay. No, the reason why I'm asking this question is I wanted to know, are the lands situated in a way, could the developer still build individual houses and then still have them for student housing purpose, as he does other properties in the neighborhood which are currently, you know, they serve a purpose for student housing? So that was my issue and concern, but if that's never been a, you know, something that's been proposed or looked at, that gives me some satisfaction. Okay, thank you.
Okay, those are all the questions we have at this point in time. So Counselor Singh, I will bring back to you, if you can click in to bring forth the recommendation. You can click in. Thank you.
So the item number three under the Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee, as outlined in the report, moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Galloway Seelock.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Comments? Counsel Fernandez.
I mean, I'll waive my comments unless there are other colleagues that wish to comment first, but if not, then...
Counsel Yonetski.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate all the comments from the residents or the handful that were here this evening, as well as all those comments that we had three weeks ago from the delegations that I was previously involved with some of these land, block plans back in my early days in the seventies of the city, and this is one of them, and we looked at, you know, a plan that's on page 39 of the previous staff report that we considered the committee, that showed a road going through and development of singles and semi-detached housing to fit into the community and the network of the street pattern, as well as the style of heritage houses that were in the community, and we thought that was good planning at the time. I know things changed, and it was, Conestoga College was much smaller back in those days, and yes, there was a handful of student housing at the time, and it slowly evolved and it grew as to where we are today. When I look at the issues of this subject property and then the vacant lands that the Conestoga College owns just more or less across the street, a triangular piece of property that's sitting there vacant, but if you go across the street and Homer Watson Boulevard across from the Petro-Canada Truck Depot there that they have, there's a six, seven-story apartment building that's for student housing, and I also happened to work on that when that was done through an agency that wanted to provide student housing to the college and in the area, and that was built, this goes back around 20 years ago or so. And beside that building, there's about a half a dozen other blocks of land that are sitting there vacant, zoned, could be developed as well, and it hasn't been. I don't know why, but the land is there sitting, they have the same potential, it'll be right next door to the existing one, and the students can walk to the, to the college. So that's a potential that, that is there, and it's not being taken advantage of. The proposal by Ian Cook next door with a family-oriented housing is acceptable by the community, as I would gather from the comments that were made previously. It's a yimby, yes, put it in my backyard, yes, but this one is a nimby, not my backyard, just because of the type of housing that's going in. The intent on the development, basically that staff have prepared, was a very challenging report, and I have to commend Garrett Stevenson and the planning staff for a report that has come forward with excellent addressing, trying to address the issues as best as they can under the circumstances they have, and going forward with this student, with this lodging house objective. I think that's really good, but that could be applied to any parcels in that area as opposed to this one, but it doesn't quite work on this one. And as I said previously, my last comments back three weeks ago, we have a development here that's got conditions, a special regulation of conditions to the zoning bylaw, and when I looked at the zoning bylaw, there are 17 provisions that were added, 17. Usually you have a zone change and usually add maybe two or three, or maybe a half a dozen. I've never seen so many. I mean, this is such an exception. In fact, one of the provisions is providing a maximum floor space ratio of 1.15. The current floor space ratio is point, 0.6. So by going to 1.15, you're almost doubling it, and as I pointed out last time, it's like taking 10 pounds of sugar and putting it into a five-pound bag. It just doesn't fit. So in this nature, and this, in my opinion, I don't think this is good planning, and I think we're going in the wrong direction by having this application approved, so I'm recommending not supporting it and defeating it. Thank you.
Counsel Galloway Seelock.
I actually have a quick question of staff.
Okay, please go ahead.
It's my understanding that it's currently zoned with Louis Residential, so first of all, am I correct with that, and as of right, what could they build on this property?
Through the chair, without a plan of subdivision, they would only be able to construct one unit because it is one large property. With a plan of subdivision, under the current zoning with a public street, lots could be created, and each one of those could contain a single detached dwelling.
But you couldn't give us a guess on what that could, like how many lots could be?
Through the chair, I won't guess what it would be currently, but as Counselor Yonetski had pointed out, on page 39 of my staff report is a block plan from 1976 which shows a road configuration. I would say that a lot of things have changed in planning since 1976, and it's unlikely that a new subdivision would have lots of that size, but that plan shows 42 additional units fronting a public street.
Thank you, I just wanted ballpark guess, and with the 47 units that are going in.
Go ahead, Counsel Seelock, Galloway Seelock, sorry.
Is it right one way or the other? It's still me. For me, I didn't make comments at the committee, and I did support the staff recommendation, and I still do support the staff recommendation. There's been a lot of talk around purpose-built housing, and that's exactly what we're doing here. We're doing exactly what we've asked our staff to do, is to come back with opportunities to make sure the student housing is what it needs to be. And we also heard here tonight that the applicant, who there is concerns with potential other houses that the applicant's property, that they'd be looking at potentially licensing those as well, so we not only get a purpose-built housing for students, we also could clean up a number of other properties, and if we can start moving that trend, then we might be in a better place. And I agree that there still needs to be the overall look at and plan built around this, but I think there's just a huge risk with not approving this, that we end up losing the lodging houses, and I feel that that's important enough to support staff's recommendation with this and to move forward with it. I think it could be the start of something good for the community as opposed to something bad, and so I will support the staff recommendation.
Counsel Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start off with first saying that our staff deserve considerable praise with their effort on working with this application. This has been a long process, especially hearing that we first started with a six-story building. I know that they must have pushed hard back, that it's come to this point where it's a three-story townhouse development that is going to be more catered towards, you know, as Counsel Galloway Seelock has said rightly, purpose-built student housing with the right type of accommodations and amenities and onsite staff that could better manage the property as well. Things that we hope for, look for in student housing, and that's being developed and around and near that site, but nothing in the close proximity to Conestoga College as the site that we're currently discussing on. The challenges are, and the neighborhood are real. It is a neighborhood in transition, you know, we have, we have families that are living next door to houses that are for, you know, being set up for student housing in not the most safest way. That is not a good environment, and that's, that's why I think some of the resentment that is so evident from the neighborhood, because they've seen bad example of student housing. This doesn't look like a bad example of student housing, this looks like a good example, and that's exactly what we do want to encourage with the effort that staff have made in working with the, the property owner. My concern continues to be the same, that this is a proposal, if you don't support it, it most likely will be challenged at the OMB, and we will lose the much sought-for and fought-for provisions, special provisions in this application that are sensitive to the families that live in this neighborhood. And we don't want to revert back to a bad design, or, you know, or, or development that speaks to profit more than conforming and better fitting into a neighborhood, and that is my concern, and that's why I continue to at least support what looks good on paper as opposed to hoping that it gets turned down and that that will be the case at the OMB, which is probably not the likely case. I encourage others to support it. It's, it's, you know, it's a jagged pill to swallow, but it's something that's needed in the neighborhood, it's something that needs to be encouraged as a, as a type of development, not here, not just here, but in future developments that cater to student housing in the Lower Dune area.
Counsel Iannidis.
Thank you, Mayor Verbaner. This one was a tough decision for me. The last time this was up here, I didn't want to, I supported being against this, but the more and more I think about it, the more and more I realize that we do a lot of talking, and we have a vision for the city, we have policies that we set for the city, and when we, when we do face some, I guess, pushback from, from the community, yes, we can take the comments from, from the community and, and, you know, we do our best to, to adjust to those concerns, and I think staff did that, and I think staff did that with, as Counselor Singh's pointed out, it was originally a six, six-story to now a three-story townhouses. I hear the residents talking a lot about they support the Cook Homes, and to be honest, I don't see the Cook Homes going to be any different than what this is proposed. Those are going to be student, they may be purposely built for families, but people are going to buy those to rent them out for student housing. That is, for me, a forgotten conclusion, that that's what's going to happen. And I don't understand what's the differences, except this one, we're going to get lodging housing, we're going to get it regulated once, once every year, it's going to be looked at, it's purposely built, the way to design for students, yes. We also got to remember that there was, there's a college there. We can't get rid of the college. The college has been there for a long time, and to be quite frank, some of the residents, they need to take, they need to take some of that into account when, when they purchase a home. They should have, they know the resident, the residents there that there was a college there. They should have known that there would be student homes, students accommodating in that area, just like in my neighborhood where the landfill, there's going to be smells, you have to take those into account. And I think as ways the city is being planned, some of the vacant lots that are out there, well, yes, they could be developed, but they're not, they're not being proposed right today, so we can't just sit there and wait 20 years from now when those properties are going to be developed, and we have a need now. It doesn't make any sense to me, and I'm really concerned with the precedent that we've been setting at this council. I think overall, we're putting up a close sign, in my mind, for, to the community, to the business world, that we're closed, and when they come with good designs, we're not supporting them. And that, to me, I think is a bad precedent that we're setting.
Counsel Fernandez.
So lots and lots could be said, because we know how long this has been going on. We know that Garrett Stevenson has been working on this file for many, many years, and we know that Oliver Jean has made proposals to the college numerous times, both to enable the architectural students to have a challenging opportunity to do a real-life project, but also to see... also to see different reiterations. But as we sit here tonight and we think about what the implications of this purposeful-built student housing could do to the neighborhood of Lower Dune, we have to really think about what that means. Yes, there are student houses in that area, but right now, as I've driven through this school year, I've never seen so many vacancy signs. I've never seen so many for rent signs. That means that the Drew Low buildings are working. They are drawing the students into purposeful-built housing. And with all due respect, I know that Oliver's intention is to provide student housing to, with respect to the students and possibly respect to the community. The challenge is, is the location. And I heard tonight from Mr. Murray, and I do really sincerely believe that the community wants to work together, to find good solutions, not just for themselves, but also for the students. And not just for the students, but for the landlords who are sincere, who want to have an investment property, but see the fact that there are students who need housing. So it, I think it is possible for us to sit down together. It is possible for us to bring the college to the table, and it, they may not be interested in having student housing and being a landlord themselves, but we have somebody here who is willing to work with the college and has done so for many, many years. Our staff has done, you know, an incredible job, and, and again, I'm going to say that Garrett Stevenson came up with some very interesting and unusual suggestions and solutions to a very difficult proposal. Not everybody is ever gonna be happy about what's happening in Lower Dune, but what we can do is we can make it better for everyone. And I think we have to find those solutions, we have to sit down together. We've had, you know, Town and Gown has been meeting for te, for close to ten years. We've seen improvement, we've seen responses from our bylaw that is quick and efficient. I know the garbage continues to be a problem, I know the parking continues to be a problem, but it's not like you guys are being ignored, you're not being ignored. I'm hearing you, bylaw hears you, and our police are, hear you. We have seen a change in, and a shift in some of the behavior. Uh, and, and I certainly thank our bylaw staff for, for being a part of that, for being proactive, for going out in October and September and knocking on every single door, whether it's a rental or not. They're meeting with people in the neighborhood, giving them information. We have a barbecue that residents attend, so we are building community, so let's keep doing that, let's keep working together, and let's not divide the community between the landlords and the students and the, and the, and the long-term residents, because I think we can find solutions. So I, you know, I am gonna stick with what I've said, I, I, I will not support this application, notwithstanding that there are many good parts to this proposal. I just wish I could see it on another piece of land where it would benefit the students and it would benefit the community.
Okay, those appear to be all the comments, so, uh, recorded vote has been requested.
So you're putting it just on the refusal, right?
Right, so if the recommendation in the report is to, uh, not support the recommendation, uh, or to refuse it, and so if you support that, you would vote yes, and if you don't support that, you'd vote no.
Just refusing or refusing?
If you're refusing it, you're voting yes.
Sorry. No, you're back?
No, the recommendation is to refuse the report, so if you're refusing the report, you vote yes. If you're not refusing, and in, in other words, if you want to support the proposal, you vote no. Those in favor of, uh, refusing the recommendation? Those opposed? Motion carries. So the application, uh, has been, uh, refused, and, uh, there's now a thirty-day period that kicks in, and, uh, the applicant can make decisions, uh, whether or not they may appeal it to the O M B. Okay, we'll now, uh, move on on, to item D, uh, but before I do that, I'm gonna, it's ten thirty-eight, uh, while I'm hopeful we won't be much past eleven, I think the reality is we will be past eleven, so I need a motion, uh, moved by Counselor Singh, seconded by Counselor Davy, you know, unanimous vote. All those in favor, opposed, that's carried, thank you. Uh, we'll now deal with the tenders. Okay, there's several tenders, uh, somebody want to move the tenders? Counselor Iannidis? Uh, seconded, Counselor Schneider. Uh, any questions on the Honeywell gas volume, uh, correctors? On that, Counselor Gazola? Okay, go ahead.
No, I, we're, we're approving a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars tonight. What are all the other things that are there on that? Uh, the estimated cost, there's another eight hundred thousand, what is that for? I'm just trying to understand what we're approving.
Sorry, are you talking about the volume correctors?
Yeah, look, yes, on page one, little I, three.
Okay, uh, Ms. Fletcher.
Through the chair, I'm just, I'm just quickly reviewing. Um, this is our, our gas capital account. It's the overall gas capital, um, uh, replacement account. So this is a portion of that overall capital account.
This, this is, this account is for the entire gas meter, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And what you're doing is just a, a special part of the meter?
Right. It's a, it's a project within that overall capital account.
Okay, I just, yeah, I, I just wanted to understand that, thank you.
Okay, any questions on number two, Hoffman Street? On number three, road reconstruction, road reconstruction rehabilitation? Number four, older inserting machine?
I'm sorry, can I ask a question on that? Sorry.
Okay, go, and which? Road reconstruction?
On the road rehabilit, we, we're, uh, we hire somebody to do a lot of this work. I'm just curious, and, and, and we're hiring these people before we do the work, to do the study on the roads and all that. Now, don't the region in Waterloo and Cambridge all have the same issues? Do we, eh, have we ever looked at doing a cooperative bid on something like that? There's another one that, that we're coming up with tonight, where we're, we're all doing the same thing. If, if we were all together, would it, would it not be, would there not be some advantages to us?
Ms. Palmer.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, not that I'm aware of, this project hasn't been looked at as doing as a cooperative, it is something we could investigate in the future with the other municipalities.
All right, that's all I would like, because I think we're all, we're all in the same vote.
Counselor Davy.
Sir, I'm on, I'm on the next one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, the folder inserter, sir, I just wanted to ensure that with our new, uh, online billing portal, I would expect even with population growth, that the number of pieces of mail would hopefully decrease instead of increase. So my question is, uh, did we build that model into this, and is there any noticeable difference between, uh, a folder that would serve fewer pieces of mail versus the increased one that we're looking at that does two million a year?
Who wants to tackle that? Who's their folder and inserter expert? Ms. Thompson, do you want to answer that question for us?
No, thank you.
No? Okay. Bill, do you want, so who's the answer? Mr. Chapman, you want to tackle it?
Uh, through the mayor, all I can offer is that the revenue team that's intimately familiar with the S P billing system was involved in developing the specifications for this tender, and so they would have been mindful of the shift that you've described when they put it out to spec. My sense is that, um, these units are not that sensitive to volume, that there are some low-volume units, which would be much lower in cost, and then there are high-volume units, uh, not a lot of variety in the middle, and so even with some reduction, the reduction you've described, this is still the size of unit that we will require.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, SCADA upgrade? Cargo vans, numbers six and seven? Counselor Fernandez, on cargo vans?
Yes, I noticed that, that there's about twelve that are being purchased. Can I have an understanding of how frequently, I, I mean, our fleet is probably, what, roughly thirty, forty, fifty fleet cargo vans that we use throughout the city? Eh, I mean, these are saying that they're way past their lifespan, so do we sort of buy a bulk number every so many years in anticipation as, as those cycles go around?
Mr. Redman.
Through the mayor, so we have our fleet review process that we do every year that looks at all of the upcoming vehicles and looks at the life cycle of them and, and recommends how many to purchase, um, so that's really what sets our, our need. So once they start costing more than they are to operate, that's when we look to dispose them.
Right, and that, that's, that's an answer that, that I've had in the past, but I think what I'm, I'm getting at is, um, we're buying about twelve, so would we be getting a more cost of, cost-effective purchase price on the fact that we're buying, you know, instead of buying two this year and, and three next year and fi, you know, do you see what I'm saying? It, there must be some cycle that we can, that we can go through on this.
Mr. Chapman.
Uh, through the chair, just to elaborate on Mr. Redman's comment, you are correct, and so every year we would group the like vehicles together and put them out for tender at once. Uh, well, it's only speculation, you'll note that there is a, a healthy surplus on both tenders, and so I do think you're correct, that part of the reason we're seeing that is because there are so many units being tendered at once.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gazola on vans?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and it's a question, I'm, I understand we approved, uh, this at budget, but I'm just wondering if you can quickly refresh my mind. I know it's one thing to be replacing vans, but when we add to the, when we add to the list of requir, and why are we adding? What, what is it that's causing an increase in the number?
Mr. Chapman.
Uh, in this case, uh, we had an apprentice electrician that was training under a journeyman electrician, that apprentice is now qualified, and so he will be out on his own doing electrical work and therefore requires a vehicle.
So are, are there some benefits coming from, uh, going in that direction? Because we're, we're, we're adding, we're, we're adding, are we adding, also adding staff here or there?
No, so this is a case where, uh, previously we, we, we would have had a fully qualified electrician, it's difficult to hire them, and so we hired an apprentice. Obviously, when they were working with another electrician, did not require two vehicles, so we saved on a vehicle. Um, but absolutely, it's cost-effective for the city to have electricians on staff versus contracting it all of the time, and so this does represent, uh, a cost-effective way to look after electrical services.
Okay, that's what I wanted to see, the other side of it. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Uneski.
Yeah, same line of questioning, eh, of the two reports, six and seven, you, you've answered one of the, 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 answered the additional unit, but I also see that there's also additional unit for special events, so is this now another new, new, uh, vehicle?
Mr. Chapman.
Uh, so you may have observed in the past that our special events attendant often uses a leased vehicle when setting up events, given the volume of events that he, um, is active at. We've determined it's cost-effective for us to add a vehicle to the fleet and stop leasing that vehicle.
Mr. Bloom, did you want to add something, or?
Just the context that they previously had a van, and when that van, uh, was no longer operable, they've been leasing for a few years, and this would actually replace one that they, uh, had full-time previously.
Okay, I'm not looking for a response, um, this evening, but in light of our sustainability plan that we approved not that long ago, I do think that we need to get an update, um, on what our strategy is going to be to move away from gas-powered vehicles, um, going forward. Uh, I think that's something that, quite frankly, we've been slow in, in doing in comparison to other municipalities, and while I know we have a fairly solid fleet regiment, um, it is something that, uh, I'll be looking for some updates and information on, so I'm just letting staff know. Mr. Redman, you want to add something now, or? Sure. Okay, but, um...
Uh, through the mayor, so now that council's approved our reduction target, the next phase is building an action plan to get there, so we're doing that work right now.
Okay, thank you. Um, gravity sewers, garbage bags, hazardous materials, and spring tree replacement. Okay, Counselor Fernandez?
I don't have a question, but I'm pleased to, um, let council know that when I reached out to, um, Adam, although he's away, I spoke with Lindsay, that there is a two-year warranty on these trees, and I think that's really important for us to know. Um, not, I mean, notwithstanding we're asking residents to help water them, there is, there is that, which is, I think, very, very important.
Thank you. Counselor Gazola on the trees?
Yes, are we, are we buying just the tree or also the service of planting the trees? And if we are, why don't we plant them ourselves?
Um, Ms. Fletcher?
Through the chair, um, this tree planting program is part of our Emerald Ashbore program, so planting seven hundred and sixteen trees this spring is a pretty, um, aggressive target. So, uh, as Counselor Fernandez has indicated, this is contracting a service to provide the trees, planting, and the, and a two-year warranty, our staff will inherit the, um, the maintenance of these trees. Our staff are also doing some, some planting related to the program as well, but, uh, we have an aggressive target this year.
Okay, so those are all the questions, all the tenders have been moved, uh, all those in favor, opposed, that's carried. We'll move on to the reports of the committees. And we'll start with Counselor Iannidis in Community Infrastructure Services.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Marsh that the report of the Community Infrastructure Service Committee be adopted through items, sir, one, two, fifteen.
Okay, um, and we'll deal with item number six separately, uh, due to the noted conflict, so, uh, I'll deal with that one first, all those in favor, opposed, that's carried, we'll deal with the balance of the report, all those in favor, opposed, that's carried. Moving on to finance, Counselor Davy.
Thank you, it's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Dave Schneider that the three items of Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted.
Okay, um, all those in favor, oh, sorry, on Counselor Singh, on, oh, okay, all those in favor, opposed, that's carried. Uh, planning and strategic initiatives, Counselor Singh.
Yeah, item number one, uh, has been, uh, moved and seconded by myself and Counselor Galloway-Seelock. The other items have been dealt with.
Yep, Counselor Gazola on this, on one, or your heritage? Okay, thanks. Uh, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, that's carried. Counselor Gazola, heritage?
Yeah, it's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Singh, that the, uh, your Heritage Kitchenery Committee recommends as follow, that the Heritage Kitchenery Work Plan is circulated with the April the fourth agenda be approved.
Okay, removed and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, that's carried. Thank you, committee chairs. Uh, unfinished business? The new business item we've dealt with, uh, nothing of significance to update from region. Questions and answers? Counselor Fernandez?
I know I've asked for this information in the past, and I think it's sort of time to, to re-ask it again. Um, as we continue to add consultants to our, our, the work that we have throughout the, um, the city, I'm wondering if we can have a, a sense of how many consultants or what the, the budget number is that we are spending on con-
is that we are spending on consultants, as opposed to having some of this work done in-house? Is that possible to get some idea? I know I asked that quite a few years ago. It's sort of time to come around again, so we have an understanding.
Somebody want to respond?
So just to clarify, it would be work that would be related, any consulting that we do with regard to road reconstruction, I mean, we hire consultants for half a dozen different things. So if we could, so if council could just have some understanding of what that expenditure is roughly at this point in the year.
Someone from staff care to comment or?
Do you want, just?
Mr. Chapman.
Give us some thought.
Through the mayor. So I heard two things. Is the interest really here in understanding whether or not we've hit that sweet spot between having in-house staff do work versus having consultants do it?
Yes.
And so I wonder if the best place to address that is through the budget process, because as we continue to add lane kilometers, so you'll recall last year, there were proposals in front of council to add staff. And so it seems to me that as we'll grapple with that issue again through the water and sewer rate review that's underway and coming to a strat session leading into the budget process this year, that's the way to view that holistically, rather than doing it off to the side.
Okay, that's fair enough.
So I think we can take that direction, but incorporate it as a part of the work that's already underway, as opposed to doing new and separate work.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Okay, I'll take that as direction. Counselor Janetski.
Yeah, this topic was brought up about a long, long time ago, but I see nothing has happened, and so I need some background or response from staff. It's now been two years since the Mayfair Hotel next door has been demolished, and the site still looks like a rubble. And I mean, we thought we were going to be having grass and sod and something, a nice improvement to it, and nothing's happening. Just wondering if there's a response to an action plan.
Mr. May.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I can get an update to council by email.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to bylaws. First reading, Madam Clerk, are there any additional bylaws?
Through you, Mr. Chair, or Mr. Mayor, yes. We have one late-starter bylaw regarding the zone change for 98 to 110 Victoria Street South and 55 Brom Street.
Okay, with that late starter, it's been moved by Counselor Marsh, seconded by Counselor Fernandez. The lead be given the mover and seconder to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda, and that the same be taken as where the first time stand referred to committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Singh, the council reserve, sorry, council resolve itself into committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Counselor Singh.
Yeah, it's moved by Counselor Etherington for the second reading of the bylaws. All those in favor? Oppose, that carries. Moved by Counselor Fernandez, item number two. All those in favor? Opposed, that carries. Can you get a mover for item number three? By Counselor Davy. All those in favor? Opposed, that carries. For item number four? By Counselor Janetski, all those in, I mean, all of those in favor? Opposed, that carries.
I'll move number five to sign Garret's.
And moved by Counselor Fernandez, item number five. All those in favor? Opposed, that carries.
Move that the committee rise and report?
I have to ask if there's any second, any late-starters, Madam Clerk? Okay.
Move that the committee rise and report?
All those in favor? Opposed, that carries. It has been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Iannidis. As follows, that the proceedings as recorded, pecuniary interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the whole, held the state as attached here to informing part of this minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed.
All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Marsh, seconded by Counselor Fernandez. That the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time. We finally pass the number serially by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And it's been moved by Counselor Schneider that we now adjourn. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And we were done before 11:00. Thank you, everybody.